Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon Fios, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry for this, but we were queued up. Are we ready now? Thank you, Mr. Vastine. I would like to call to order our Council Business Meeting of April 17, 2014. Ms. Lassina.
I wish to make the following announcements to show compliance with the Open Call of Meetings Act number 12231 of Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975. Notice that this meeting was given by the county annual schedule of location, time, date, sending copies of the Scotch Plains Times, the Star Ledger, the Courier-News, posting in municipal building, and filing a copy with the township clerk within seven days following the annual organization meeting of this law. Everyone will please rise to the bridge of the flag and remain standing for our indication.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Before tonight's indication, I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of George Davis, most of whom is Danny, the resident of Scotch Plains who passed away this weekend. Danny was born in Plainfield, a fourth of six children. He worked for welding concrete as a retired, and retired as a master mechanic after thirty years of service. In continuing the legacy of his own father, he took part in the rehabilitation of the Jersey Land Park Community Center, and went on to become the Jersey Land Park Community Center President for over thirty years. This Saturday, there will be a visitation at St. John's Baptist Church from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., followed by a celebration of life at 1:00 p.m. At a future council meeting, we will present his family with a proper proclamation in honor of his service to the community, but for now, please join me in a moment of silence in his memory. Father, be with us this evening as we gather to conduct the people's business. As spring slowly comes upon us, signifying new life around us, be with our many residents and their families and guests, who this week are celebrating the important feasts of Passover and Easter. May we be reminded that while we come from many different traditions and backgrounds, birthplaces, and paths to Scotch Plains, that we all come together to make Scotch Plains one community. To that end, grant us the humility and courage to do our best on behalf of the community at large. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Jones. Ms. Lassina, Lassina, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Giolinella?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Vastine?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Our next item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone wishing to address this council tonight, please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and other members. I want to thank Carolyn Perkins, 861 Westfield Road, Scotch Plains. I want to comment about the potholes, they're being done, and they're doing a good job, but there's still more to be done, particularly in front of 867 Westfield Road. The recycling containers that are supposed to be at every public building to recycle, I have not seen them. I know in Fanwood, since I belong to both senior groups, the can is this high, it has a hole in it, and you can only put bottles or cans in it. It's a nice way to recycle. And since we have a lot of events that are going to be having soda, et cetera, maybe water, it would be nice to have those containers available. I don't believe they're very costly. Regarding Shady Rest, we were working on the preservation study, et cetera, and that's been seven months now, and I was kind of hoping somebody had some type of update. Maybe I will hear it. But we talked further about Shady Rest, and I know that Mr. Vastine is aware, and so is Jerry Janis. But I specifically stopped there last night to survey the building at night. It is dark. The walkways, there's two walkways, the one where the woman fell, has been completely redone. The day that she fell, it was done, in the rain. The other walkway is in need of some repair. However, there are no railings. In that parking lot, I found at least four lights out, and I know that other people will agree with me. The lighting at the actual entrance to the building is one light bulb. So if that light bulb goes, you're not going to see anything. Now, we do rent this out, it is a liability issue, and I get very concerned, because I don't like to see lawsuits for the town. The woman who fell three weeks ago stayed at home for two and a half weeks, because she had raccoon eyes, because she fell on her face. I did see her last week, she went to a wake, that was her first outing. Seniors need to get out, so we don't need anybody to fall. A railing on each side of those walkways would be ideal. I'm not asking for two, one on each walkway. You know seniors are dear to my heart, not because I'm a senior, but because I've worked with them so many years. The pink flyer we got today in the mail, the town messenger, whatever, it called, it talks in there about the public property hotline. You call that hotline, and again, it's outdated. It's kind of like our message when you called and said, "Our summer hours are." Well, this one talks about the leaf pickup, and the storm, and worms, and then the Christmas trees are going to be picked up. That's four months ago. Okay? So maybe somebody could update that. Now, I know I've talked about this before, and I don't know what you paid for the radio station, but your station, your radio station, could be your station for communication. Okay? You could list the leaf and gumball pickup. You could say that the same, the same sections are going to be followed for leaf and gumball that you do for the townwide cleanup. We're either in, in District 1, 2, 3, or 4. You could announce the farmer's market opening. You couldn't announce a lot of things on there if one just chose to keep the people informed. Papers are papers. Lot of seniors do not get access to a computer, and many of them have vision problems, so they don't read too much either. And I think a lot of these things, maybe they don't read either. Now, I understand that my town bakery was closed as of March 30th, which is kind of unfortunate, because now we have more empty stores. Westfield next Thursday is having girls' night out. They're having it next Thursday. Fanwood was supposed to have theirs May 8th, but they're going to have it May 29th, I believe. They had to reschedule it. It would be nice if Scotch Plains maybe just tried it once, a girls' night out? Good, because I've never seen one here, and that might entice some people. I can see the last Firefly getting involved, I can see a number of other businesses. It would be a very nice thing. We talked about grants. I hope grants are being applied for before the deadline, where we're not going to be too late, and we've missed the deadline. Okay? I'm not even going to mention Brookside Park again, because I'm hoping there's a grant for that.
Just one response to Mr. Perkins, that Councilwoman Giolinella is planning or working on a ladies' day. No, thank you. That's all the commentary, that's all the commentary. Sir?
Frank Fester, Ramaphaw Way. Good evening. I ask about $1.24 million that was given to the senior housing, and I was wondering if it was in our budget, and I believe that it has been brought down to a zero, or not in the budget at all. Can someone explain why? Was it a grant that we gave the, the senior housing corporation? A loan? Is there, no? We didn't give them $1.24 million? No.
I'm not sure. I believe in the beginning, when it was first, when they were first building senior, I believe when they were first building senior housing, the town did loan the debt money behind the whole senior housing, and does show it well. Hence, you can take what that is ever sold, where they were coming from.
So it, does it, Mayor, does it physi, is it physically shown on our?
Excuse me? What was your question, sir?
Is it on our budget?
I don't believe it's in our budget, I haven't seen it in our budget. Mr. James?
But there, there is, there is paperwork to follow up. We will get $1.24.
Well, I will defer to, you know, manager to give you, and our CFO.
Yes.
To respond on that. Obviously, it predates me. That original deal went back to 1990, if not 92, as I recall. I don't even believe I was living in town at the time, Mr. Festin.
I sent a, a letter dated March 19, 2014, to the council. I sent it by fax. Did the council receive it?
We got a copy of it.
Did get a copy.
You brought, you brought that up the last meeting, yes.
Okay. And Terry Lou Zoo. Can someone explain to me why we had to take Terry Lou Zoo by eminent domain?
Actually, that's me, you can ask that question to me, because I was proud when that happened.
Oh, yes.
And it's my understanding that, at that time, the township wanted the land, because they were going to build a Sunrise Assisted Living, or some kind of similar venture.
Absolutely.
And tried to negotiate to purchase, as you're required to do under the law, and they refused, and then an action was instituted, and condemnation at that time. It's a while back, it goes back probably fifteen years.
1998, Councilman?
Yeah.
Okay. So we took Terry Lou Zoo by eminent domain, and we now have a lease with the Rotary, and the place is a mess. If we get, if, first of all, that, that house, I still question whether it's historic or not. Frazee House. If we get that back, can we go back to Sunrise Assisted Living and ask them if they would put that property on the tax rolls? Thank you.
As you know, it is the intent of the town to use that as a passive park. As you're probably aware, since you attend all these meetings, that there are plans by our Recreation Department this coming year to remediate some of the soil there, so it gets us going in the direction, because I would agree, that's sat, has sat quite a long time.
Any activities there? Will we charge for them, or will it all be free?
To be determined, sir. I'd like, I'd like to see the property remediated, I'd like to see it open to the public. I think they've waited long enough to have that accomplished.
Thank you.
Lot of promises, but I think we're finally going in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Festin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Albert Mueller, also Ramaphaw Way. We all know that this is tax season, and people are paying their taxes. I believe Fanwood has the capability of paying their taxes via credit card, and I don't believe we do, and I was wondering if it's worth pursuing. The state is allowing payment of taxes, the federal government's allowing a paying of taxes via credit card over the Internet, and the state's allowing certain licenses, if not all licenses, to be paid for, over the, over the Internet via credit card. It might be something we may want to think about, and might make it easier for our in-house staff, as well as the residents, to pay, to pay their taxes. So I would ask you to give due consideration to that.
Thank you very much for coming forward on that front.
Thank you.
I know there's been discussion of that in the past, sir, and as you know, we do, I believe, accept credit cards within our Recreation Department, so I think the ability to do it, it just, we'll have, the details will have to be worked out by our manager and our CFO. So hopefully, we'll give you an update soon.
Because you made it.
No, we, we understand, thank you. And it's, it's, we're not operating in the blind, we actually can take a credit card. Thank you, sir.
I missed a lot, so I don't know, maybe I'm repeating myself. But I don't know who I should.
Please, for the record, even though I know you.
Oh, Ilse Hydemeyer, 1380 Carroll Road, Scotch Plains. Now, I don't know if I should ask the manager or our attorney.
Why don't you ask the question, and then we'll figure it out.
Okay. Could you explain how it applies to the mayor and council, and the governing body, judicial, legislature, and executive?
Please, for the time being.
The executive would be who?
Well, the executive, there's no branch of government.
The three branches of government is the local government.
Not, not, not in all branches of government. In this form of government, under the council-manager form of government, the day-to-day affairs are controlled and handled by a, a manager, whose powers are significant in running the day-to-day affairs, including personnel issues, et cetera. The council is the legislative body.
Yeah.
And they also handle policy issues, and so there really are two branches of government in, in Scotch Plains.
Okay.
There is no judicial, other than the municipal court.
But, the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment is quasi-judicial?
They handle land use applications, and they are quasi-judicial in nature, meaning that they act like a, a judicial body. They handle purely land use applications.
Right. Now, everyone is really surprised how the mayor and council only looks good on paper. They actually have no say. The manager has all the say there is. Now, at one of the meetings, when it was raining, and they were working on the ceilings at Scotch Hills, the manager said, "The only way I would authorize a new roof is if the roof falls in." Well, the ceilings fell in, and that was at a meeting, and it's repeated on television. And I quoted exactly how it was said. Can you respond to that, or are you allowed to?
I don't think your assessment is accurate, with all due respect. We have undertaken repairs, you know, on the building, on an as-needed basis. Beyond that, I can't say anything else.
Well, I think the people saw it on our meeting. And does the council contribute to the health care, like the other employees?
Yes.
They do. And do all the council members have hospitalization health care?
Well, actually, that's, that's actually an issue that is not for public consumption.
Oh, okay.
If you want to file, if you want to file an Oprah request and ask information on that, but it's not an issue for, for personal reasons, and.
Oh, okay.
That you can't ask that publicly.
Okay, I'm sorry, I asked a question. And is Shady Rest the official name now? Shady Rest at Scotch Hills?
I do believe that's been factuated within the last couple of weeks, yes.
Thank you, I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. You missed your.
I'll take all of this. I'll take all of this. Oh, one other thing. Since the manager has all the power, I think it's very good not to keep a manager for 28 years, because all, everything that we are involved in, and we're cosigners to the Senior Citizen Housing, is all because of Mr. Atkins, our manager. All the problems we're in was because of him. Now, why is he still on the board of the Senior Citizen Housing Corporation?
I can only tell you this, that that is a separate body, a separate legal entity. They choose who they want on that board, not this governing body. They have a liaison, but that body chooses its own member.
However, the taxpayers are their cosigners for the deficiency agreement. There's no other way of putting it, is there?
I can only tell you, you asked a question about why he's on there, it's really not up to this body, but up to the, up to that body to determine.
Oh, but that's kind of a conflict of interest.
Well, I'm not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move on. We have some presentations of recognition. I guess I'll begin, the first one, I'll summarize it. It's a, the state that, this proclamation recognizing that the township is observing Building Safety Month. Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety, heard a little about that today, and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, by our prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property throughout our community. There is a second proclamation.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
I may let the record reflect that pre-eclampsia is a dangerous condition of pregnancy that, in the severest form, can lead to maternal and/or infant mortality, or premature birth with significant health risks for mother and baby. And on Sunday, May 18, 2014, the Pre-eclampsia Foundation will hold a promise walk at Oak Ridge Park, where local supporters join together to raise much-needed funds and awareness of this cause. Therefore, Kevin Glover, Mayor of the Township of Scotch Plains, does hereby proclaim May 2014 as Pre-eclampsia Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next on our agenda is, we have a couple of ordinances. Ms. Lassina, can you read the first ordinance by title, please?
Ordinance number 2014-1, calendar year 2014, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget cost of living allowance, and to establish a cap bank when the COLA is equal to or less than 2%.
Is there a motion to? I mean, if you're back or not. What happened?
Just going forward.
I didn't pick it up.
They didn't pick it up?
Let me read it one more time. Ordinance number 2014-1, calendar year 2014, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget cost of living allowance, and to establish a cap bank when the COLA is equal to or less than 2%.
Thank you. May I have a motion on, on this?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, and be advertised according to law in the Scotch Plains Times, and that copies be available in the clerk's office, and posted on the bulletin board. The second and final reading and public hearing on same to be held on. May 20. May 20, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal building, Park Avenue, Scotch Plains.
Second, that motion? Is there a second? Second, that motion? Jump in the gun there, young man.
Yeah, quick.
Okay, before we take a, a roll count, I need a.
Sure, just a quick comment, you probably hear this speech.
Every year.
Every year, despite the fact that the ordinance is written to make it seem like you're exceeding a cap, you are not. This tax is taken directly from the state government, that's why it sounds that way. It's been worded poorly for years, despite the objections of, I know, my professional organization, but this is what it is, we are not exceeding the levy cap.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
I think so. May we please have a roll call, Ms. Lassina?
Mrs. Giolinella?
Hi.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is the introduction of the 2014 municipal budget. Before we get an explanation from Mr. James, I guess we should ask, is there a motion to introduce it?
Certainly. Mayor, I would like to move that we introduce the 2014 municipal budget of Scotch Plains.
Thank you. Please do a second.
Second.
Mr. James, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure, I mean, I won't go into my full-blown presentation like I did last week, because at the public hearing, you'll hear the, you know, full-blown presentation, you know, with the spreadsheets and the PowerPoint, but in summary, the budget represents a .009 cent increase, just under one penny, will affect the average taxpayer approximately 111, approximately $11 per year. Some of our, you know, notable items of revenue that have increased, you've seen steady increases in the Uniform Construction Code increases over the, since, you know, over the last five or six years, but we're continuing to hold the projection flat, just for the sake of, you know, trying to build some fund balance, and, you know, despite the fact that we may think it's going to increase, and it probably will, you know, I think it's just good budgeting. Some of the things we've reduced since the initial discussion we've had was police overtime. We found some issues within the salaries in DPW that we were able to reduce, and we had a pension reduction. This summer, we're getting more increases in contributions from the employees towards the health insurance. The general appropriations are up by approximately $158,000 from last year. Our salaries are made, make up, you know, a significant majority of the budget, 64% of those are contractual, 34% of them are non-contractual. As has been noted in the past, the largest salary increase contractually is from the Police Department Union. Some of the decreases over, over the year, like I said, was pension, the health insurance contributions, we paid off FEMA about $160,000, and the property and casualty insurance went down. Our sewer rates are staying the same, and we've made some modifications to the bond ordinance. Overall, you know, of the belief that this is a pretty solid budget, it really meets the needs of the taxpayers, you know, it's relatively conservative, you know, we're nowhere near the levy cap going to the 2%. I think this puts us in a good position over the next several years to really, you know, as I've always talked about, increasing our financial position as it relates to our bond rating. Part of that is instituting what I'm hoping to institute this year with respect to long-term financial planning and trend analysis, and, you know, I think, you know, this is just a step in that right direction. I would like to thank our CFO, who's with us tonight, Lori Majeski, for all the hard work that she's put into this, many hours of me, my sometimes painful questions at times, you know, maybe not the easiest person to deal with when it comes to this stuff, but, you know, it's a stressful time for everybody. You know, it's a, it takes a lot of work, the staff has been phenomenal, you know, they really took to heart my, you know, directive of, you know, let's keep your operating budgets as flat as possible, that's what we're looking for. You know, any increases were thoroughly vetted, and, you know, again, I thank them, you know, the council, I've had input from every member of the governing body at some point over the last several weeks, some of you, most of you have come in, I think all of you at some point have come in to talk to me about it, or spent, you know, several moments, you know, the hour or so on the phone, asking questions, you know, with respect to the process. You know, so that's really all I have right now, there'll be more of a full-blown, you know, presentation at the public hearing, so when the public's here, they can kind of visualize, you know, all the things that we're looking to do. And actually, that, I expect that to be on the website in advance of the meeting anyway, just kind of give a preview of it. So with that, I'm here, Lori's here, and I'll turn it over. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. James. Council? Mr. Vastine, Councilman Vastine, any comments on the introduction?
I'll, I'll yield my time for, for right now. I'll, I'll defer at the moment, I mean, I think Jerry explained it well, so, I have a question at this time, but.
Well, if we come here to, so we're not going to make any further comments, if we go through the, I'm asking both of you if you have any comments. So I'm going to assume that, are you yielding? Like we've ever yielded our time. Do you have any comments on the 2014 budget? I mean, or we're to wait till someone else speaks to make comment, I'm, I'm just confused a little here.
I'll get some commentary.
That would be, I'd love to hear some commentary, if I don't hear from you, then I'm going to assume you don't have a comment.
Have you mixed the commentary on this budget? First of all, I'd like to thank our professional staff for all their hard work on this budget, in particular, our manager, Jerry James, and our CFO, Lori Majeski, and thank you both for answering my many, many questions. This is my first municipal budget being on a council, and there's a lot of things I had to learn going through this process. Look, I'm sure everybody up here, we're all happy and pleased that we can say that we've got the lowest municipal tax rate increase in many, many years, but I'm still mindful of the fact that for the residents, it's an increase that people would rather see flat. It's important also to keep, be mindful of the fact that while this year our municipal tax rate will be very low, the school and county increases will not be as low. You know, today's newspaper shows that the county tax rate will be going up about 3%, and when they do the apportionment to different towns, it's likely that that will be even higher for Scotch Plains residents. So that's really just a reminder of the cold, hard reality of the property tax situation that all New Jersey residents have to bear, and why despite the relative good position we find ourselves in here today in Scotch Plains, it's still important, as Jerry said, that we hold the line on spending. Two quick final things I want to highlight on, on this year's budget. First of all, is funding priorities that we want to fund, in particular, for me this year, the fact that we're returning to fully fund the library is something that I'm very pleased with, with this budget. Secondly, there was. Secondly, there was comments made, um, critiquing some of my critiques of last year's budget, which I did make some comments about, and saying that, you know, that last year's budget was, was irresponsible and that my critique was wrong. Um, I wanna dispute the assertion that, that my critique last year was wrong. Um, and doing that, I wanna explain what changed between last year and this year. And what changed really was that in the interim, the, the, uh, collection rate of people, the percentage of people who are paying into the, paying their taxes on time in Scotch Plains went up significantly, uh, year over year. Um, you know, that's some, and, and there's an important little interesting detail that a lot, not everybody realizes on this fact, which is that the municipality acts as the tax collector, despite the fact that the county and the school taxes are all part of, of your tax bill. And when that, those monies come in, we, the township, must give the county and the school board exactly what they are owed. So if collections come in lower than anticipated, there's a bit of a shortfall, and we, the municipality and our budget, bear all the consequences of that. Conversely, if the collection rate is higher than anticipated in the prior year's budget, we bear the benefit of that, and that's the situation we find ourselves in right now. So, with that being said, um, you know, I, I like this year's budget a lot. It doesn't use some of the, uh, one-time funding items that were used last year. Again, that's because of the, the, uh, fortunate situation we find ourselves in due to the, primarily the, the increase in the tax collection rate, as well as some other things like construction permits that you heard the manager mention before. Um, so again, thank you to Mr. Jones, thank you, Mrs. Majeski, for putting together this budget, and, uh, that's the balance of my comments. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just, I've gotta ask you a question. This yielding of time, so, if everyone yields their time, then can I just not recognize, you know, that and just move on and say, let's have a vote to introduce it?
Well, no, I mean, the council members, if they want to respond, um, they certainly have a right. It's, we're in a discussion phase.
And I'm asking them to respond.
They, they don't have comments right now, but that doesn't mean that they, they don't have the ability to comment.
Okay.
My sense of what they just said was that they just don't have a comment right now.
Okay. So will there be a?
You're not precluded from bringing a comment up because we're in a discussion phase of the, of this meeting.
So hypothetically speaking, if Councilwoman Gilanella wants to yield her time, and now the mayor says he's gonna yield his time, so where's the standoff here?
Well, I mean, then there would be a motion and a, and a vote, and then you can move on. Uh, so if nobody wants to make a comment, then you just move on, and, and someone makes a motion.
That, that's fair enough. So.
I, I do have some comments, Mayor.
Please.
Okay. I just wanted to, um, say that I, I too echo the sentiment of Mr. Jones in expressing appreciation for the work that went into this year's municipal budget. Um, I am pleased that, again, we are delivering a low tax increase to our residents. Unfortunately, um, I would've liked to see us do more with this particular budget. I would've liked to see the money that we left at the table by ending our police merger discussions with Fanwood be used to do things like appreciate, like bring additional funding to some of the funding priorities that have been expressed by members of this council. I do believe that if we had not let politics end those conversations, we would be in a much better place moving forward, and that we would have additional money to really look at capital improvements and really look at making significant changes to areas like our library, to areas like recreation, to areas like our firehouses that are in desperate need of approval, improvement. We made decisions, and those decisions have consequences. And at this particular time, when we talk about an eleven-dollar increase, realistically speaking, I don't know anyone who lives in this fictitious house. You've all heard, when you talk about consequences and you talk about tax increases, the idea that money that we put forward on our, on our municipal ta, on our property tax bill goes to the county as well, goes to the school system. We've spoken a lot about shared services, we're not there yet. I would encourage us to do a better job of making certain that grant opportunities are not missed for any reason, and that when grant opportunities are available, we go to the max for that dollar amount to bring money back into Scotch Plains. If we're putting out three percent to the county, we should be making sure that we get that money back for our residents. I'll have additional comments when we speak later about the capital ordinance, but I wanted to make sure that these particular thoughts were shared at the introduction of our budget for the two thousand and fourteen year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. I'll go back to Mr. Bastine. Councilman?
Sure, I'll, uh, I'm prepared to comment. The, the concept of high property taxes in New Jersey is not unique to Scotch Plains. I think, uh, New Jersey's got the second highest taxes in the country, um, and in large part, property taxes in New Jersey are responsible for funding public education in most towns. Um, if you recall, the income tax was created in New Jersey to fund public education, um, but with the Abbott Court case, most of the money that's collected for the purpose of public education, and, and, as a matter of fact, fifty percent of all monies that's collected through income tax is, uh, delivered to about fifty towns out of approximately five hundred and fifty or so. So the property tax dilemma is a, uh, uniquely bad one for the state of New Jersey, um, but made even more exacerbated by, uh, activist judges, uh, directing money to, uh, fifty towns out of approximately five hundred and fifty, uh, putting the burden of public education financing on the shoulders of property taxpayers. However, there is a silver lining in Scotch Plains. Um, if you recall, last year, and then again this year, an article was published in the Star Ledger that showed that the municipal portion of property taxes in Scotch Plains, um, were actually the second lowest in Union County. So if you strip away the county portion and the school portion of our property taxes, Scotch Plains property taxes are the second lowest in Union County. That's significant. Um, what it shows me is that the fiscal responsibility and effectiveness of Scotch Plains town government has been very strong. This wasn't from last year, the numbers were published prior to last year's budget being approved. This is the responsible, fiscal responsible leadership that has been managing the town, uh, for, uh, decades here in Scotch Plains. Um, I wanna touch briefly on the other issue that, uh, Councilman Jones brought up, and that is that the, the budget last year, which I voted against, in my opinion, was extremely irresponsible. Um, a blind squirrel will find an acorn every now and then, but the truth of the matter is, if the stars had not lined up, we would've been in a significant, difficult period this year. The fact that we have a little bit of breathing, breathing room that's come from a higher-than-expected tax collection rate, and the fact that we collected more in construction fees this year, in my opinion, is not cause for us to become, uh, drunken sailors with the township tax dollars. I agree that with those that have commented that the budget this year is extremely responsible, and it's responsible in a number of different ways. First and foremost, we fully funded the library, which quite frankly is the most utilized service in Scotch Plains, above most everything else. So I think that fundamentally, we had an obligation to the taxpayers that if we were going to return money to them in the form of services, the library was a huge priority for us, and I'm very proud of the fact that we were able to do that this year, um, despite calls for having pancake fundraisers and, you know, scheduling our hours at the library in conjunction with towns outside, uh, around Scotch Plains. Um, we, we are Scotch Plains. We're not Fanwood. We are Scotch Plains, and I think it's important for us to provide services, services to our residents and not rely upon other towns to do that. The other part of this responsible budget, in my opinion, is the fact that we don't spend every last nickel that we've made. Um, I confirmed earlier before the meeting that we have a double-A bond rating. If anybody's familiar with what a bond rating provides, it provides you with the ability to borrow money, um, depending on the amount, but also the rate at which you have to pay that back in interest. The fact that we have a double-A bond rating is not a fluke. We have a double-A bond rating because we are fiscally responsible in this town. Thank goodness, after last year's budget, that we did have the ability to make up for it, um, because when we go out to bond in the next couple of years, um, I'm not certain that we would've had as high a bond rating as we currently, uh, uh, enjoy. Um, that bond rating, uh, I believe, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Majeski, was last established in two thousand and twelve, um, so it's actually prior to last year's budget, um, and it reflects the fiscal responsibility that has, that has persisted in town for a number of years. Lastly, I would like to speak to the comment about the police merger as it relates to our township budget. Um, I think it was made very clear by the election last November, after probably a dozen robo-calls, that the joint meeting police merger was not in the minds of the voters, the direction they wanted the town to go in. So we can characterize this situation as the fact that we stepped away from the negotiating table, but the truth of the matter is, we said that the joint meeting structure does not work for Scotch Plains. Hey, Fanwood, how about you be willing to look at other forms of merger of the police departments? A more traditional merger? They categoric, categorically said that they would not consider those. So the fact that Scotch Plains was open to consider a number of different formats for, for merging the police departments in order to save money, I think speaks volumes for what is true leadership in politics and government, uh, versus the closed-mindedness that said, no, we will not do it unless it is this way. Unfortunately, in my opinion, and in the majority of the governing body's opinion, a joint meeting structure for a police merger was not responsible. In fact, it was irresponsible as it represents the taxpayers of Scotch Plains. If I was on the council in Fanwood, I would see it exactly the same way that the Democrats did last year. But I'm not. I'm here in Scotch Plains, I represent the taxpayers of Scotch Plains. So therefore, I think just a little bit to set the record straight, um, in, in regards with that, i- is important to understand because we're still willing to have conversation with Fanwood, uh, regarding a police merger, we're just not willing to subjugate the taxpayers of Scotch Plains to Fanwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Please.
Again, at this time, I will, uh, refrain from comment.
Okay. So you're, you're done?
At this time.
At this time.
I will refrain from comment. At this time.
So if, uh, again, Ms. LaRue, if, if we have people reframing com, from comment?
Well, if, if there's no further discussion, then, then someone can make a motion to move forward and, and approve the budget for introduction.
I think, I think we did introduce it.
If there's a second, then there.
We haven't had a roll call, obviously.
I don't think there was a motion.
No.
I don't think there was.
We, there was a motion to introduce, and there was a second. Well, 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 let me, let me just cue it up for the deputy mayor then, because obviously he wants me to speak before he gives his comments. Um, as most of you know, I've been on this council since two thousand and six, and if you go back and look at history, I have probably been the fellow who's spoken out most against the tax increases, and quite frankly, I take credit, great credit, seeing that the taxes, since I've become a council member, started unwinding from the previous ten years that I had been, before I had been on council. Uh, we, we made significant progress. Quite frankly, last year was the lowest increase we had in ten years, and in spite of what some might characterize as, um, you know, a, a bad budget, uh, one that would create, you know, havoc for us in two thousand and fourteen, but you know, folks, just like in previous years, you've heard that rhetoric before, it didn't bear out. It didn't bear out. Quite frankly, this year, okay, uh, the township, uh, surpluses are better than they've been in recent memory. As a result, we've been able to, uh, fully fund the library, which I think the entire council was in agreement of doing. Our bond rating, you've heard references to. This year, when we went out for bonding, it was clear from listening to Ms. Majeski earlier in the year and our bond counsel, that we did terrific. We, we, we did terrific in terms of what our bond rate was this year and what we paid. Am I, well, I'm, not a bond rating, but when we went out to finance money, we got great rates. CFO agrees, we got very good rates on that. Uh, probably better than we have in the past. Look, folks, may not seem like a lot of money. I'm sure deputy mayor will have some commentary on this. I too believe we've missed a lot of opportunities. You know, there are just some folks who are simply, were not willing to move forward or have further discussion regarding police merger, sharing of services, something the governor is encouraging us to do. Uh, as you know, I think I've been a responsible, uh, public servant, not a partisan. That, that record is well-known by now. And, um, you know, the fact that we haven't had a meeting with our, you know, sister town, Fanwood, regarding, you know, opportunities, uh, to, uh, merge services since the election, I think, again, is another missed opportunity. So, so let me get to the bottom of it. Our surplus is better than it's been in many years. Mr. Jones and I spoke about that earlier today. I spoke about it with Ms. Majeski, our CFO, on Tuesday. You know, the economy is turning. This is good. It's what some of us predicted would happen, that we would get out of this recession. Now, are we there yet? No. Will we do better? I believe we would. If you look at the numbers, if you follow the markets, you know, that is quite evident. That said, last year, we had one point two percent, six percent increase, and, uh, we, we had a significant reserve in, in-house. This year, I am proposing that there be a nil increase, and I believe it's quite possible. I have a good study on this budget. Mr. Jones and I last spoke probably a couple of hours ago, and I don't think he disagrees. That, he may disagree with me that he would might wanna be more conservative, but I think he will agree we, we, we are, we, we do have a very good ample, uh, surplus. In fact, such that even with a nil increase, folks, we will have a larger surplus than we had last year when people screamed for certain people's heads that we were being totally irresponsible. So, my proposal is for the public to go and look at the budget, which will be published. Look at the monies that we have on hand, and just like the sewer utility years passed, I say, give the money back to the public where we can. By the way, that didn't turn out to be a disaster either. We returned that money that was collected, uh, beyond what was necessary to our citizens. Similarly here, I know we have a wonderful reporter from the Scotch Plains Times who's heard me say this for the last X amount of years, we can do better. I still contend we can do better. I am proposing that the public look at this budget. I'm proposing a nil increase, that's zero, and, um, we'll have that discussion a couple of weeks out, once again, when the public has the opportunity to question and to challenge, you know, what I, what I've just said. So with that, I hope I've queued you up for some commentary here.
Thank you. Uh, I, I do have a few comments. Firstly, I believe that the budget as presently constituted and crafted by the town manager and CFO is responsible, and I congratulate both of you for the hard work and effort that's been put into crafting this budget, and, um, for, to the CFO for guiding us through our budgets for many years, uh, and, and all the time that I've been on this council. In, in my four years, this is now beginning of my In my four years, this is now beginning of my, middle of my fourth year, this budget is the lowest tax increase that we will have seen over the course of my four years. And I think that that's a very, very good and significant thing to happen. So I feel very, very positive about how this budget has been designed for this year. A few general comments. I think for the public to understand, most importantly, when it comes to payment of your property tax bill, there is a breakdown of how that money gets allocated and how you pay your taxes, and it's been commented on before by other members of the council. But the fact of the matter is that over 60% of a residence tax bill gets paid to the school budget, over 60%. I believe that the figure this year is about 63% of the tax bill. That tax is attributable to the Board of Education. That's their budget. That's not our budget. That's not the town council's budget. The second biggest piece of the pie goes to the county of Union. In this year's budget, I believe that the figure is somewhere around 20% of everybody's property tax bill gets paid to Union County. So that's up over 80% of your tax bill, gets paid to other entities besides the town municipal government. So that is not meant to pass buck, but that is to explain the facts. So when residents look at your property tax bill each year, and if you unfortunately see an increase, the overwhelming majority of that increase is going to come from the other two entities, the school board and the county. And this year is no exception. And in reading the papers, the last I saw, Scotch Plains residents can expect, on average, approximately a $250, $250 increase in your school taxes. Also, in reading the paper, you can expect, on average, somewhere in the vicinity of $85, $90, maybe $100 of an increase going towards payment of your county taxes. So right there, we're up to about $350, if not more than that, for a lot of taxpayers. So we are left, the town council is left, with the task of coming up with the municipal budget. And each year, we put a significant amount of time, working with our professionals, the manager, the CFO. The council spends time to review this budget, to hopefully put together the best budget we can for the residents of Scotch Plains. One that provides services that we are accustomed to, and one that lives within our means and recognizes the fact that property taxes have been spiraling up for years and years and years. It's been a major problem in New Jersey. I don't need to explain that to anybody. All of us know that. All of us have to pay it, and we're no exception. We pay the same property taxes on the council that everybody else does in town, of course, depending upon the value of your property. But that's how it works. And I believe that really the truth of the matter is that what has been hurting taxpayers and what may be driving taxpayers out of town is not so much what happens here in crafting the town budget, but what happens at the other levels. That's where those big increases are coming from. And I'm not casting aspersions at anyone, because everyone's trying to do their job, but that is the fact of the matter. So no matter how you feel, if, you know, all of us, I think it's incumbent upon all of us, to look at the tax bill and to look at the other entities and to, everyone's got to be held accountable for what happens. But clearly, when you're looking at the $250 increase in school taxes, $85 to $100 increase at the county, what we're doing here, I think, with all due respect, is not what's driving people out of Scotch Plains. So at the present time, we are looking at a budget that calls for a less than one cent increase in the municipal portion of your tax bill. On average, it calls for an $11 increase in property taxes. And as I said before, in my four years on this council, that's the lowest we've seen. That's the lowest we've seen. So, you know, it's, you can always quibble with results, and you can always say, well, we could do something different, we could do something better. You know, that's up to an individual opinion. But you have to look at the overall picture in terms of the town budget and what the final result is going to mean to the taxpayer. Each year, I take the time to discuss with the professionals, with the town manager and with the CFO, how these numbers are arrived at and what their recommendations are based upon. And I did that this year, and I've done it this year. And it's been, it's been made clear to me in speaking with our professionals that they are very comfortable with this budget, that a very modest increase in the taxes is something that we're able to do this year, in light of the fact that last year, we had some unexpected revenue that we received, and we are now in the position to do that. And that's certainly a good thing. In terms of going any further, you know, we can dissect the numbers, but the bottom line is, surplus is used each year to keep taxes low. It's inserted into the budget so that we can maintain the lowest possible taxes we can afford to give to our residents each budget year. This year, we have increased the amount of surplus that we're using by, according to my calculations, and please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, $477,000. That's a significant increase in the use of surplus. The overall number that we're using is over $2 million, closer to $3 million, $2,727,000, up from what was used in 2013, when we used $2,250,000. So that's a big jump. And in my discussions with our professionals, they believe that the number that we're using at this time for this budget is the right number. Could we change it? We could. But the question is, what effect would that have upon our budget, not just this year, but next year? And the fact of the matter is that each year, we don't know precisely what we're going to be able to do that year in terms of the revenue that we receive. Last year, we made projections. This year, same thing. You make projections, that's how you craft your budget. If you do better than expected, that's certainly a good thing for our town. Everybody wants to see that. If you do not as well as expected, then you've got a problem. And I believe that in my discussions with both the town manager, Mr. Giles, and the CFO, Ms. Majeski, that that's what they've tried to guard against in terms of how they've put this budget together. So I think, all things being equal, what we have before us at the present time is a good, responsible budget. That the numbers that have been used to come up with the proposed tax levy makes sense, they're fair, and they're, there's something that we have tried our very best to keep modest so that the residents of this town don't suffer any additional increase, and that includes all of us, other than the ones we're already going to get, that are going to increase everybody's tax bill this year. So I'm comfortable with where we are. Last year, we had a higher tax increase than we do this year. And at that time, there was, we used a reasonable amount of surplus. That's what we're doing this year. You don't want, you don't want to put yourself in a lurch so that in the future, unexpected results come back to haunt you, and you're looking at tax increases over and above what we're seeing this year and what we saw last year. So having said that, you know, we've also had several meetings where we've discussed this budget before, and with all due respect, I have not heard any suggestion before tonight, before this meeting, this televised meeting, that it's been proposed to use even more surplus than we're already using for this budget. So people have the right to make that suggestion. That's their opinion. But I think, as I've indicated before, we're using close to $500,000 more in surplus to offset the taxes for all of our residents than we did last year. And at this point, I would simply defer to the town manager, and I would respectfully ask the town manager, based upon the recommendation that you've made in terms of the use of surplus for this year's budget, would you, would you care to comment? Would you care to comment on what's been proposed?
Excuse me. I think the manager had an opportunity to speak. He has the CFO here. We've had a motion on the budget. We've had it seconded. We've all had our commentary. I'm going to call for, if you're finished, I'm going to call for a roll.
Let me reply.
Are you finished?
No. Let me reply to that.
I'm finished.
We all, all of us up here, including myself, rely very, very much upon the opinions and the recommendations of our professional staff when it comes to developing our budget. There's been a proposal made to use additional surplus monies to reduce the tax levy even further. To be asked to vote on that issue and not to have the benefit of the recommendations of the folks who craft the budget, at least to some extent, I think is very neglectful. And, you know, I, for one, would like to know how the town manager feels about it and what his opinion is, because that certainly influences me to an extent in terms of decisions that I need to make when it comes to the budget. I would assume that it may be the same for the other members of the council.
Mr. Giles? You and I spoke this afternoon about the budget. Let's get some facts straight before you come, all right? Because I don't intend to be here an hour going through this and debating this budget. You've proposed a budget which you are comfortable with. For the record, you and I spoke this afternoon about the amount of surpluses there. For the record, the surplus is larger than last year. For the record, just because we're using more surplus money this year, we would still have more cash on hand this year had we used. And what we're talking about, folks, is somewhere around $90,000 out of a $28 million budget.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay?
There was a question. Point of order. Point of order.
Excuse me. I didn't recognize you.
Point of order.
I did not recognize you.
Councilman Marcus asked a question.
But I don't believe, if I'm not mistaken, that was the question that Councilman Marcus asked. Asked Mr. Giles whether he thought that the budget, if using more surplus, that's the question. He has a right to answer the question.
That's right.
And that's, when a council member asks a manager a question, he has a right to answer it. So I guess, Mr. Giles, if the question was asked of you, you want to respond?
Mayor Glover and I did speak today, I went about the issue, and, you know, I respect the point of view, and I told him that on the phone today. I don't agree with the point of view, and I told him that on the phone today. It was a good discussion. It was a civil, productive discussion, just like we're having here tonight. I go into a budget, you know, in the five or six that I've worked on in my career now in the last six years, you know, not with a number in mind. I go in with the goal of providing a level of service, and that's what we came out with. Should be noted that the reason, and it's been made mention to the tax collection rate that we're using, 500 and some odd thousand extra in fund balance and surplus this year, is, you know, because of tax collection rate. I mean, that gives us, I think, close to $700,000. I mean, that's a huge deal. You know, it's akin to a Christmas present, the best Christmas present you can get as a town manager when you have that tax collection rate. However, the reason, you know, I disagree respectfully with the mayor's position is because our tax collection rate the last couple of years prior to that was not that good. That's no fault of anybody in the municipality staff, it's just the way it is. I mean, you rely on people to pay their taxes. You know, if next year's tax rate comes in and it's similar to this year, then you might start to be looking at a trend, and I would probably, probably would see things a little differently. With respect to being higher than last year's, you know, cash balance surplus, it is absolutely a couple hundred thousand dollars. I think you told me 200,000 to now just over 600,000. If we had reduced that 600,000 by 90, $87,000 or whatever it would be, you know, then you're bringing us into a $500,000 range of a cash on-hand surplus. I want to see it higher. I don't think last year's number is really a good baseline number to look at, because that wasn't a good number. That was a terrible number, you know, so you don't want to be under that. My last comment, you know, this has been brought up when, on a couple of different occasions in the last standard and correspondence rating report, where they made mention to our, at the time, 2012, you know, that the surpluses were, you know, decreasing. And while they gave us an excellent financial rating, which I think could be better, and that's actually what I'm working for, that's one of my main goals here, they mentioned it again towards the end, where they said, you know, if the strong reserves don't remain and the surplus doesn't remain, you know, you could be downgraded. You know, I don't want to see that happen. I started my career in a AAA bond-rated community, one of the 11 or so in the state, one of the 200 or so in the country. I went to my next town in a double A bond-rated community and had that community in two years up to a double A plus. I believe we're in a stronger financial position than that other community, and with our double A bond rating, Lord, you might think it's crazy, but I think we can get to a AAA bond rating and be one of those very select few communities in the state. You know, so that's where I'm coming from. You know, I can respect the point of view, and, you know, my opinion will probably, if the tax collection rate stays the same next year, my opinion's going to be exactly on par with Mayor Glover's is right now. But I would just like to see another year of that really good tax collection rate, you know, before, you know, I make that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Okay, we've had it introduced, we've had it seconded, we've had commentary, we've heard from our manager twice.
Mr. Mayor, could I get a point of clarification just real quick? We're introducing the budget tonight.
It's all we're doing.
No, I understand that. If it's modified, we have to reintroduce it, correct?
Only after it's introduced, and only after it's introduced. So if you introduce it, which is actually approving it, not adopting it, between introduction and adoption, if you modify, if it's a percentage, if you're based on percentages, then you have to reintroduce it if it's over a certain percentage.
Right. So the point of clarification is that the mayor did suggest a 0% tax...
So, the point of clarification is that the mayor did suggest a 0% tax increase this year. If we're introducing it now, the only way we could facilitate that is to reintroduce it again at another time, correct, with the modification?
Depends on the calculation.
It depends on the calculation.
Maybe, it depends on the calculation and how that 8-something thousand works out.
Okay. I just want to make sure we were all seeing it the same way.
That's why I've asked the public to weigh in, to give us your opinions. Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Lucina, are we all in agreement? Let's call a roll to introduce.
I just get clarification, I'm sorry, I want to thank the attorney then. We're voting to move the budget process forward.
That's all we're doing.
This particular, just so members of the audience understand, a yes vote tonight isn't a yes vote on the budget.
Right.
It's a vote to move the budget process forward.
That is correct.
To introduce it.
Okay.
Councilwoman. Any other clarifications anyone would like to make before we roll on? Ms. Lucina, please call the roll on the introduction of the 2014 municipal budget for Scotch Plains.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna read the budget resolution first.
Thank you.
And I'll call the roll. The municipal budget for the township of Scotch Plains, County of Union, for the fiscal year 2014. Be it resolved that the following statement of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year 2014, be it further resolved that said budget shall be published in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Times on the issue of May 1st, 2014. The governing body of the township of Scotch Plains does hereby approve on introduction the following as the budget for the year 2014. General appropriations within caps for municipal purposes, $18,792,776.12. Appropriations excluded from caps municipal purposes, $3,627,444.98. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $1,850,000. Total general appropriations, $24,270,221.10. Last anticipated revenue, $8,273,207.11. And the difference, the amount to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget, local tax for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected taxes, $14,712,132.99. And the minimum library tax is $1,284,881. Notices hereby given that the budget and tax resolution will be approved by the governing body of the township of Scotch Plains, County of Union, on April 17th, 2014. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at Town Hall on May 20th, 2014, at 7:00 PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for 2014 may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons.
Thank you, Ms. Lucina.
Mrs. Jill Anella.
Hi.
Mr. Jones.
Hi.
Mr. Marcus.
Hi.
Mr. Bastin.
Hi.
Mayor Glover.
Hi.
Okay, folks, the next thing up on our agenda is we have another ordinance. Ms. Lucina, can you please read the title, ordinance by title?
Yes. Ordinance Number 2014-2, Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Making of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery. New Communication and Signal System Equipment, New Information Technology Equipment, and New Automotive Vehicles, Including Original Apparatus and Equipment in, By, and For the Township of Scotch Plains, in the County of Union, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1,525,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Okay. Counsel, may I?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading, and be advertised according to law in the Scotch Plains Times, and that copies be available in the clerk's office, and posted on the bulletin board, the second and final reading in public hearing on same, to be held on May 20, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the municipal building, Park Avenue, Scotch Plains.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jimes.
Sure. We're giving a copy of the draft ordinance at the prior meeting. As I said at the last meeting, the major changes from what you received in the work session until last week and then now, is we determined that we can get some extra life out of the street sweeper for at least another year, maybe two, added on an administrative vehicle, added on attachments for our loaders, and added on a line striper. That, we believe, will make the operations of the Department of Public Works operate a little better. Otherwise, nothing has changed. As you can see, you know, everything is essentially the same, and, you know, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. One point, I'm sorry, Mayor, one point of clarification, as you know, you were given the binder, you know, this is to approve the ordinance, but as is the case with any bond ordinance item, because all of them are in excess, most, almost all of them are in excess of some type of bid threshold, you would be reapproving these items again at a later time, whether it be by an ordinance or an approval of a contract or a bid of some sort. So, this is the ordinance being passed, but not the items being pushed forward.
No clarifications, Mr. Jimes? So, maybe we don't understand, but it was excellent clarification. Yeah, is there any comment from?
I have some comments and some questions. As a comment, I would like to thank both of you also for taking time to meet with me this week, more than once. Thank you. I do have a couple questions. Number one is this, and I didn't, we spoke about the idea that the architect's report with the, with the estimates will be available, Jerry, in the next couple weeks?
Probably should have the estimates by Monday.
So, does it make sense to table this, so that we can move forward with a capital ordinance that actually includes some hard and fast figures for how we're going to go forward with Shady Rest?
I don't think so, because that puts, that puts this ordinance behind a couple weeks. I mean, doing a second ordinance, depending on how the council decides to handle the Shady Rest situation, I think would be the most ideal situation. We would just do a separate bond ordinance related to that. You know, there'll be several options you're presented with, and whatever you decide to go with is what we'll do. But that, you know, I'll get the draft, I actually have most of a draft report in my office that I just got within the last two or three weeks. And, you know, the estimates, like I said, I probably should get Monday afternoon on the 21st with the meeting that I'm having. You know, so, I'm anticipating a public meeting on that report sometime in the middle or the end of May, you know, and then by the time we decide what we're gonna do there, and, you know, what option you want to go, we could, well, look, we might be into the summer, you know, between a conference meeting and another meeting. So, that really puts this ordinance behind almost two months. And one of the problems we ran into last year, you know, with the delay of the bond ordinance, was some of the items, we really couldn't get moving on until, basically, it was too late, and we had to wait till the following year to really, you know, get going. So, if this was done earlier in the year, you know, yes, I think that would be a fair question, and it would be, I would agree with it. But based on the timeframe, I just think that it would be better to introduce a separate bond ordinance with respect to the Shady Rest, and after the council has had really a full time to digest that report, because it'll take some time.
My concern is this, though. I, I don't want to put ourselves in a position where there isn't the same commitment later on. What do we have, what's the exact dollar amount that we have budgeted for repairs to Shady Rest in the capital budget?
Well, right at the, with this proposal now, we didn't put anything in there, because we're anticipating a separate bond ordinance for that. So, this proposal doesn't do anything with that. Could we probably find monies in other bond ordinances to reappropriate? I'm sure we could.
We still should have that $100,000, there should be about $100,000 remaining from the Spray Park money.
Yeah, we, when we change the bond ordinance back sometime in the, the end of the summer, early fall, to actually use the Shady Rest, so yes, that money is available.
But everyone who sits up here realizes that $100,000 is gonna be a drop in the bucket for what, all right. So, I have a couple other questions. Where do we have our five-year plan for capital improvements?
It's in the back of your statebook up here. April, page 36, starts on page 36.
Okay.
Pretty much, the five, six, or seven, six years, and then on the page.
We, when we spoke this week, we talked a lot about the paving, and you, you know my thoughts on that. And I do appreciate what you're hoping to accomplish there. But we did make two very large purchases last year in the capital budget for equipment that was to assist us during paving. My concern is, are you confident at this particular time that the purchases that we're making here won't be unnecessary in light of future changes?
No, I think in looking at this, everything here, no matter what procedural changes I have made or continue to make with respect to the day-to-day operations, all of these items will still have their full life. I know, so I can't speak, well, it'll happen five, 10 years from now, but, yeah.
And we discussed, I mean, just for the record, I'll share that I do have a level of disappointment that there wasn't additional money allocated for some additional, for some areas that are in dire need of improvement, you know, our firehouses being, being one of those areas. When we look at the number of volunteers that have really decreased in Scotch Plains for our fire department, and if you take the time to really tour the facilities and understand the equipment that they're working with, I appreciate the steps that we're making in this particular capital ordinance, but I would have liked to see funding available also to really do something with these firehouses. So, I'll just, you know, say that publicly, you and I have had that conversation privately. Hopefully, in the next year or so, we can really look to do something to make a difference at those two facilities, in addition to Brookside Park. Yeah, that's it.
Any other comments? Comments?
No, none of the comments.
Yeah, just very briefly, a couple items I just want to highlight for folks that's in this capital budget that I'm particularly excited about. One is the funding that we're allocating towards working on the Terry Lou Zoo property. I know, Mayor, you referenced that earlier tonight, as well as the money that, it's unfortunately gonna be a little bit of a lengthy process, but we have to involve the DEP with it at Brookside Park, but we are starting to make progress on that pursuant to this budget. And I'm also very excited about something in the manager's office, it's a citizen request system. It's something that's gonna help, help us better meet the citizen's need going forward through, throughout the different services that the township provides, so. And then I'd also like to echo something that our manager referred to, and that's, that's the idea of long-term budgeting, and I know Colleen was just speaking to it as well. You know, we finished, we finished this budget process, but there are a lot of big priorities that we have to, we have to really rank and prioritize carefully, and, and I think that's a conversation we're gonna have to, have to have shortly, and I look forward to having that conversation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We've had, we've introduced it, we've had a second, we've read the ordinance, I believe, and so can we have a roll call, please, on this?
Mrs. Jill Anella?
Hi.
Mr. Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Marcus?
Hi.
Mr. Bastin?
Hi.
Mayor Glover?
Hi. May I have a motion on approval of council minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Majeski dismissing her from the meeting. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Majeski.
Thank you very much, Lori, thank you, thank you.
You too.
May I have approval of the council minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, the council minutes from the meetings of March 4, 2014, and March 18, 2014.
Just a second.
I'll second that.
So, any comments? No, here?
I have a question.
Yes?
Is March 18 the meeting where the executive session was interrupted by the fire alarm? Or is that an April meeting? No, that was March 18. Was that, how was that meeting, how did that end? We did have a motion and a second before we left. Okay.
Thank you. All those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. The next item, Mr. Jimes, is the manager's report.
I'll be somewhat brief, because almost all my comments either related to your, all your budget discussion, or the subsequent resolutions. Couple, couple items of note, I know we had talked about the microphones earlier in the meeting, there are some that are not working. Bonnie and Ray, Ray Poreo are in the process of talking to different vendors, and we are looking to make this an upgrade sometime in the next several weeks or months. So, I would expect that to be upgraded. I'm not involved in that process. Jeff is aware that, you know, I've stepped aside to let Bonnie handle it on this matter. Terry Lou Zoo has come up a few times, within the last two or three weeks, I was made aware of grant application and approval from the state in the amount of somewhere in the $100,000 range, that's gonna go into a lot of the study and the cleanup there, and that came from a state grant, thanks to our engineer, who did a lot of work on that, that's Mr. Bob Lyons. So, you'll be getting some type of approval on that within the next two or three meetings, and you'll be hearing more about that in the future. As you know, tonight, we're kind of running out the test for the paperless agenda, you know, most I see some of you using it. Next meeting will be the first meeting where we actually use exclusively, seems to be working. I think the most hesitant person dealing with it so far was our attorney, you know, from the outset, and I, and I'm gonna just read this, he wrote to me a note while he was using this, "I love this idea."
There's a bill.
So.
What if you get the bill?
And that's all I have, an outline.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jimes.
Terry, the only thing is, item numbers are not showing. Is there a way to do that, do, I have to refer to the paper for the item numbers?
Oh, you want me to get it?
No, I understand.
I'll give you for an outline.
So, we, on the, on the agenda, on our, on our screens, there's no item numbers. So, it may be a, is there a way to change that, so we're not?
I'll talk to the, that guy, I don't know.
No, there's no way, when we do the agenda just through the paperless system, there are no item numbers, so it'll just be the items underneath the headings, the main headings, there'll be no more item numbers. So, people will have to refer to them that way? Yes. Okay, all right, thanks, Bonnie.
Fun time in the meeting, reports a special committee.
I have a bunch of stuff.
Please, go. I'll defer to you to the left.
You want me to go first? Okay.
You take a long time.
I'm sorry, well, there's a lot of information here.
I mean, that only a good speaker.
I know, thank you. I'm gonna try to do this without my glasses, so.
Fred, Fred's eyes are closing out there, but.
All right. I have some information from the Recreation Commission, and I will provide that as quickly as I can here. Senior fitness classes. Recreation Commission offers fitness classes for seniors each season. Fitness classes include Zumba Gold and yoga. Registration for Zumba and yoga classes will take place on April 29th, with sessions starting the week of May 5th. The cost for the Zumba class is $5, while the cost for the yoga class is $15. Senior citizen advisory trips. The senior advisory committee will, will have trips featuring a karaoke cruise around New York and New Jersey, from Chelsea Peers on July 16th, as well as show and lunch at the Crystal Point Yacht Club in Point Pleasant on August 13th. Registration for the karaoke cruise will begin Tuesday, May 27th, with the cost of $58 per person. The trip includes bus ride, cruise, entertainment, and lunch. Additionally, registration for the trip to Crystal Point Yacht Club will begin on June 3rd. Registration can be done online by visiting the township's website and clicking the Community Pass link, or in person by visiting the Recreation Department in Room 113. Senior transportation, transportation for residents who are senior citizens is available and provided free of charge by the township. Our bus service includes transportation to senior social clubs, shopping, and mall, I'm sorry, yeah, mall trips, as well as medical transportation on an as-needed basis. To register or for more information, please contact our dial or ride number at 908-32- To register or for more information, please contact our dial or ride number at 908-322-5151. For information on any of these programs, please contact the Recreation Office at 908-322-6700, extension 223. I have more. Some recreation announcements. Small Fry Camp registration for children who are ages three to five and have yet to attend kindergarten is now open for registration. The Rec Commission offers three two-week sessions with two time slots for each session. Space is limited in each session and time slot. Each session has a 9:00 AM to 11:15 AM slot, which is $140 per session, and an 11:30 AM to 1:45 PM slot, which is $110 per session. Registration can be done online by visiting that Community Pass link on the town's website. Scotch Hills Golf Registration, now known as Shady Rest at Scotch Hills Golf Registration. 2014 golf memberships at the Shady Rest at Scotch Hills Golf Course are now available. Members receive reduced green fees, email updates, free lessons, and more. Registration can be done online by visiting the town's website, as stated before. Additionally, the Scotch Hills Golf Course is scheduled to open this Friday, weather permitting. That's tomorrow. The hours of operation for the golf course will be 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Plant a Tree Program. Scotch Plains Recreation Commission, in conjunction with our local Girl Scouts, will once again be sponsoring the township's Plant a Tree Program. Residents are invited to come to Town Hall on Sunday, April 27th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and receive seedlings to plant and grow young trees. Supplies are limited, so residents are encouraged to come early to ensure they receive their seedlings. Spring brochure. The Rec Commission's spring brochure is available now. The Commission is offering a wide variety of programs beginning in the spring, including our popular Stars Theater Program over the summer. The brochure will be able to be viewed online by visiting our website and clicking the Recreation tab. Lastly, the township's Facebook page. We encourage all residents to visit and quote "like" and quote "the township's Facebook page," which can be accessed by visiting www.facebook.com/ScotchPlainsTownship, along with township information and updates. You'll find recreation program information, class changes, and cancellations on our township's page. Uh-oh, I see one more thing here. Field closure Facebook page. In addition to the township page, the Scotch Plains Rec Department has created a Facebook page to update athletic field closures on a daily basis. That's big this time of year. This page will be updated when weather has affected our facilities. Additionally, the Scotch Plains Rec Department is coordinated with the Fanwood Rec Department and the Board of Education, so that all fields that are used in Scotch Plains and Fanwood will be updated on the page. To like and receive updates, please visit www.facebook.com/spf, capital F, Fields.
Well, thank you, but I'm going to ask you for an update, how's that? I'm going to prolong the agony.
An update?
An a, an update, an update, and you, you appreciate this. It has to do with our veterans receiving a discount for playing golf, our volunteer firemen, you know, as such, as well as our rescue squad, I guess. I know I had requested that, I know you had brought that to the Rec Commission. How is that resolved? Are we ready for this spring?
My understanding is that that discount will be on.
Will, which will be? They will get what?
I, I can't tell you, I don't want to misquote it, because, you know, if you would.
At the very least, what the seniors were getting.
Yeah, had I known before the meeting, I would have gotten it.
Okay, no problem.
Of course, I don't have it readily available.
Just so long as, because we want to make the announcement with this golf course opening, you know, if we have a veteran who wants to play there, we want them to know that they can take advantage of a discount.
Well, I would suggest that they call.
Maybe we'll post, if you'll get the information, we'll post, and we'll post it, Jerry?
I think in the meantime, I would ask any veterans, I would ask any veterans to contact the Recreation Commission.
Good.
At 322-6700, extension 233, and to inquire about that. I'm sorry, 223, extension 223, and to inquire, because as I said, the golf course is opening tomorrow, and they will give you that, that information, so.
That's why I brought it up. Thank you very much. Believe you have some comments you want to make?
I, I, I believe, and unless something changed since we discussed it last, that that, the conversation was that it was not going to be the same as the seniors', it was going to be something akin to a free round of golf.
Well, whatever, whatever.
Well, no, we, there wasn't resolution on that. The Recreation Commission hasn't brought a new ordinance to us, but, you know, I mean, if we're going to have the conversation, I would like to say that I would have preferred to see a revised ordinance that addressed these concerns, rather than having to create these other situations. I think it would be much more clear moving forward if there was a consistency in the ordinance, and I'm just not exactly clear on why opening the ordinance is a concern. But I have a number of things. Okay, I'm very happy that Councilman Marcus reported out on the tree program, and I do want to thank the Recreation Commission for agreeing to bring the tree program back again this year. Jerry, I know you were copied in some of those correspondence. It's something that I really felt passionately about last year, it was a step in the right direction. It's a good community outreach, it's a feel-good day for the community, the Girl Scouts really enjoyed it, and thank you. Councilman Marcus, if you wouldn't mind extending my heartfelt gratitude to the Commission, I would really appreciate that. I, I do want to remind everyone that there was the first strategic planning meeting for the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education Strategic Plan. I would like to say that it was a very proud moment for me to see that our township manager was there, in addition to our police chief, as well as our mayor. I felt that the township of Scotch Plains was very well represented. I appreciated Jerry taking the time to be there, and thank you, Mayor, for coming as well. And my thanks once again to Chief Mahoney. Chief Trigo was there as well, as well as the, the business administrator for the township of Fanwood. It really looked good to have such a strong showing. It was very well attended, it was, for me as an educator, very motivating to see so many members of the community so involved in strategic planning. There are two additional strategic planning dates that have already been scheduled. One is coming up very quickly on April 29th, that would be at 7:30 PM, and the other date is coming up at, on May 15th. Just as a reminder, it's important that we understand that strategic planning is not something that is restricted to parents or students who are currently involved with the school system. The purpose of strategic planning is to really involve all stakeholders in the community. A great deal of conversation was had tonight on the idea that a good deal of our property taxes are impacted by our local school board. I think it's important for our business owners, our building owners, for our residents, to really understand how those tax dollars are being spent, and to have a voice at the table, and strategic planning does allow everyone the opportunity to do that. So I would encourage anyone watching to really make sure that you're getting involved in, in the process. I would also like to say that Dr. Hayes gave a very lengthy com, a lengthy presentation on the quality of the services currently being provided to our children. As a taxpayer, as a mother, I was extremely impressed by that presentation, and I just wanted to share that today. On that note also, please be aware that registration is still underway for the 5K that will be occurring on Saturday, April 26th, and the proceeds from that will benefit a scholarship fund awarded through the PTA for a high school senior that's going into a health-related field, as well as the Live Strong Program at the YMCA. Both are extremely, I don't know the word to use, they're just unbelievable clauses. If there's ever a clause to support in the community, both of those would be really fabulous, and I would encourage many of you to participate in that event. I also wanted to make sure, you know what, Mayor, I'm going to reserve some of those, some of the other comments I have for the council comment, may be more appropriate there. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, my last thing, I'm so sorry. I'm the fire liaison, and I, I have to take a lot of pride in that, although the role is mildly limited. I do want to thank the township manager for taking some time to speak about some possibilities to raise funding for our fire department yesterday. And I also want to comment that we had a resident participate last week in the one run for Boston. She was able to, through the generosity of our fire department, present to the family of a Boston firefighter, the, the patch of the Scotch Plains Fire Department. That firefighter died recently, and his family was honored in this way. Participants in this run were able to give a patch. I have a picture of the presentation that was made to the family, and you could see our Scotch Plains Fire Department patch right there, and it really is very impressive. And I would like to thank her for doing that.
Any other comments?
There, I left one thing out of my manager's report, if I may, that's.
Please.
Kind of important. Just so you're aware, next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I will not be in the office, I will be out on some personal time, which is the first since I've been here. So in my absence, Chief Mahoney will be handling things as it relates to the manager's duties with respect to signatures, and as it relates to decision-making, obviously, I'm just going to have my phone and email, and he'll be able to reach me as needed. You certainly all can reach me as needed as well.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Jones. Hopefully, we won't have to bother you while you're out on your personal time. But one never knows, one never knows, one never knows. Just a couple of feel-good comments. A week or so ago, we had our annual Easter egg hunt, and I, I just want to thank a group of kids that just made it absolutely spectacular, probably the best we've had in all the time that I've been in Scotch Plains. It was so well-attended, the weather agreed with us, and you know what? These kids deserve some great recognition. And the kids I'm specifically talking about are C, kids that are in the C, C, D classes of Immaculate Heart of Mary and St. Bart's. I've never seen folks work so hard and dedicate themselves so much to making certain that others younger than they had a spectacular day. I think the total was like 4,300 eggs had to, plastic eggs had to be stuffed, and let me tell you something, it was done in record time. Albeit, we're still looking for some of that candy as they were stuffing. The next thing is, we had another spectacular event the same day, which was the opening of our baseball season at Booth Memorial. Huge turnout, day couldn't have been more glorious, never saw kids, you know, happier and ready to get going. A lot of people wanted to speak, you know, the mayor gets an opportunity to speak there, and I chose not to, I brought everyone around in a car or so, take me out to the ballgame, and I think it was appropriate for the day. And I'm hearing a comment from the crowd. Oh, and, and, and I'm glad there is some comment from the audience here. The Terrill Middle School Jazz Band, I had it in my notes, and I did miss it. Again, on, on the Easter egg hunt, they just brought something so unique to the, the annual festivity. Any one of you who were there knows what I'm talking about, and it would have been remiss of me not to remember the Terrill Middle School Jazz Band. I've sent letters to both, they're all organizations thanking them for making that day spectacular. It's the kind of thing where we can all agree, made Scotch Plains a better place to call home. So, that's the story on the special committees. Thank you again for your comment, Terry, thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. I would like to table the consent agenda, three items here, because I have some questions about them, and so I, I'm, I'm making a motion to table these, these items. If there's a second, and I'll.
Which ones, Mayor?
The communications consent agenda, the new business consent, excuse me, the new business consent agenda.
Okay, we're going to, are we going to have, I will sec, I will second the motion to table, but we're going to have, are you going to, we're going to talk about why?
Well, I, I want to share with my colleagues why. I, I just know that, that, that I would like to see this go out to a public bid, rather than to a co-op. My belief that we might be able to secure better pricing on these items through a public bid. I understand that legally, you know, going through a co-op is perfectly fine, and, you know, one would say that when you go to a co-op, you assume you're going to get the best price, but not necessarily so. I consulted with several professionals on this front, and while this is, I understand to be a pretty good co-op, it seems like we are directing most of our activities to this co-op, and unless you're a member of this co-op, you really can't bid on public work. So I would just like this council to have a little more discussion about this, and then consider, while it takes a little more work and a little more effort, but we have very capable engineers, and we have very capable employees of putting these items out to bid, items that we've put out to bid in the past for the record. So that's, that's my reason for wanting to do this.
And clarify some things. We are putting some of the roadwork, Westfield Avenue in particular, out to bid on its own in a go-it-alone manner, because we do believe that that's the best way to do that road. Something, Mayor, with all due respect, that's categorically false, is that anybody can bid on a co-op price. There is no membership for a vendor, the membership is us as a town, us along with 200 and some odd other towns that represent eight different counties and school boards and towns and utility authorities. So any vendor has the opportunity to bid, this is a public bid. They do go out to bid, they are sealed, they are open, no different from when we go out to bid. We are directing a lot of businesses, not just towards this co-op, but the Middlesex Regional Co-op and the State Contract Co-op, and that is a purchasing directive that I've made to the staff, going back to one of my first two weeks here, because I believe it's the most efficient. I believe that when local governments put their provincial interests aside in exchange for the broader benefits to be achieved of cooperative purchasing, we do perform goods and services at a better price. It represents a viable and more cost-efficient and efficient alternative to the traditional go-it-alone process. We've been doing this in a way I don't feel is best practices over the last several years, and part of my long-term financial planning is getting a better hand along the purchasing mechanisms in this community. Ms. Majewski's not here, she had left, you know, earlier, but she could attest to, and I can attest to, just in my short time here, you know, dealing with the purchasing in the community has been difficult, because some of them, I'm just going to say, some of the best practices have not been followed. So this is a public bid, every contractor who does any type of business with these, you know, with any service related to a municipality is fully aware that they're able to bid on co-op contracts, or state contracts, or Middlesex Regional, and there's absolutely no membership that they need, you know, to do that. I've talked to at least one contractor, who is fully aware of that, although still doesn't like the process and doesn't have an interest in bidding that way. Well, you know, I can't be concerned with that. My concern is getting the best value, my concern is using our men in the Department of Public Works, who I believe do a fine job at the most efficient matter, and the way it's been done in the past is having a, I guess, hodgepodge, for lack of a better word, process that would last, you know, six or eight weeks, only working two, three days a week. Well, this project's going to be done in a week, and it's scheduled to start April 28th.
I, I fully understand that, I mean, anyone who knows me, again, my history here, that I've been a big proponent of bidding, and, 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 you know, cleaning up our routine as it relates to that. So I don't see it as provincial, I haven't seen any, I guess what, what we could ask for is, you know, hadn't asked for some, some more documentation that would substantiate why this is going to these, who is actually, you know, we know who's getting the work, but where is a spreadsheet that would open it up? And if we're not, if there is some confusion as it being a public bid, again, I have only one interest, one interest alone solely, which is to make sure that the township is getting the absolute best price. You know, at the last conference meeting, we had this discussion, so this is not the first time I'm bringing this up. You know, I've been in facilities management for a good part of my career, and I think I know something about bidding, and I think I know that municipal government is certainly different than corporate. But I also know that, that if you get a piece of paper on the street, and we certainly have capable engineers that can do that for us, and employees, that intuitively, professionally speaking, from 30 years of experience, I believe it might be a worthwhile effort in order to validate whether we're getting the best possible prices.
We are, like I said, using a two-phased process here. The co-op work for the smaller streets is what we're using. We are absolutely going, and again, that was bid. I've sat in those big rooms, I've watched the contracts, I've seen a hundred contractors stuffed into a courtroom the size of this to make sure they were all open, sealed, the whole thing. When it was all done, everyone reviewed each other's bid. It's about as open as a bid process you're gonna get, just like anything, it's public bidding. But we are doing the bidding, as you said, for the Westfield Road. There are significant differences between public and private sector bidding, you know, there's just no question. I mean, I think the state contract's a little different than the Morris and the Middlesex co-op, but, you know, these are really, in effect, the largest shared services. You know, the Department of Community Affairs, part of the statement that I read was from page one of the Department of Community Affairs website as it relates, you know, to cooperative purchasing, when I talk about provincial interests, when I talk about saving dollars and not doing the go-it-alone process. That is straight from the DCA, you know, website. That's their comments. It's been their comments for several years. I wrote an article on it in a prior League of Municipalities magazine. You know, I know this process, and, you know, we are doing it both ways. There's no question that we're doing it both ways, but...
Yeah, curious why, you know, we're doing it in one, on one road, and we're not doing it on this, so I'll stand by my position. I'm not a provincial guy, I'm very frugal, you know, when it comes to spending the township's money. I just, maybe you and I have to have further discussion here, because I'm not convinced that we're getting, or I'm not, not a question convinced, I would be more comfortable if I saw a paper on the street that, you know, allowed to make, and made certain that everyone had an opportunity to bid on this. So, we can agree to disagree respectfully.
Can I, Jerry, when we spoke yesterday, we had a, maybe it was the day before, we had a conversation about, is there a way to compare these numbers to numbers that we've seen in the past, so that we know our, and I understood that your answer to be no?
It's hard, because, you know, with asphalt especialators, there's an escalation index that's required every year that we're required to use, and the state's required to use when you're using these contracts. So, every year, it is a little different. As far as is there a mechanism, you know, to put it out on the street, if you would, as a bid, and then compare the price to a co-op, and then if you don't like the, you know, the low bid, then go to a co-op or the state contract or whoever? No, there absolutely is no legal mechanism to do that.
Can I, can you, can we go through, I just need to understand that, because that doesn't make sense to me. And I believe you, and I understand that you know this, but if it doesn't make sense to me, I'm sure it doesn't make sense to members of the public.
Well, it's like, it's actually similar to something we're doing here. We're rejecting a bid because it came in well in excess of our estimated price. So, that might be one reason you can legitimately request, or reject.
The most.
Yeah, that's the most legitimate reason. But as far as, you know, the public bidding process is intended to be a sealed bid, and when it's open, that's your final bid of work. You know, if you find out that it's not the best bid, you say, oh, man, we could, can we reject all these? And now we know the co-op's cheaper? No, we don't have the ability to do that. The reason we're doing it differently is because Westfield Road requires, is a little more complicated and requires more work to be done, so it's kind of...
Is the funding the same for the Westfield Road project?
Uh, yeah, it's all, it's all the same overall budget number. You know, when you have, you know, a hundred or so municipalities that probably use this contract, and not just this contract, but, you know, just the theory of cooperative purchasing, whether it's, if we use this for office supplies, and, you know, sometimes telephones and pens and pencils and, you name it, pretty much everything we buy is off of some type of state contract or co-op. You know, when a bidder knows they're gonna bid on something and have two-hundred potential people using it, from an economies-of-scale perspective, they're clearly gonna be able to bid better than somebody who's only bidding on one project and knows they're only gonna have one piece of work. That's the theory behind it.
The tough piece for me, and you and I talked about this yesterday, is that it's very hard for me not to be able to compare an orange to an orange. It seems like we haven't, the hodgepodge, I don't know if that was you who mentioned that, or the mayor who mentioned that, the idea that these jobs were done by a hodgepodge last year of contractors made it difficult to, you know, actually like price point, you know, do a cost comparison, but I'm seeing, you know, I mean, we're looking at, so you have a paving company, there's a line painting company, and there's a, there's TILCON for the paving and milling, and then the catch basins. So, we still have multiple companies participating. Is there any way to look, you know, what did we pay for the catch basins last year? What did we pay? I mean, is there, there's no way for us to know when we vote on this amount of, I mean, it's a lot of money.
I can tell you, Emile, it's a difficult comparison for a lot of reasons, but we've looked at it, and I can, first thing in the morning, give you the financial analysis. It becomes a relative wash, you know, in a lot of ways. But the reason this is more efficient is because we're not doing it two days a week for several weeks with our guys who could be doing other things around the town. You know, we're doing a project, this is a project that, by all accounts, in any municipality, any size, with this mile of road that we're working, should be done in a week.
I have no...
Yeah, no, I'm just, I don't...
My question is, are we, how can we make sure that we're getting the fairest possible price? How you're, how you're running the day-to-day and what you're deciding to do to the DPW guys? I mean, there is so much work to be done in this town. I am not remotely concerned that they are gonna have nothing to do if somebody else is paving the roads.
And the challenge there is, because it's a sealed bidding process, you know, there is very little way to compare. If we're buying something under seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, you can kind of quote-unquote chop around. You know, we don't have the ability to do that with something like this, because the only legitimate way to do it, you know, it's hard to, you can't compare year to year because of the escalation cost, and that's out of our control. You know, the only way you could actually do it is the way that's not accurate, the way that's not legal, is to put it out to bid and then compare the prices to the state contract or co-op or whoever. You know, so, you know, it just, it's just one of those...
Can't we compare it to what other people are paying in other towns?
Well, you know, you might have other towns that have done it. Every town does it a different way. You might have towns that did it the way that we did, I highly doubt that, but, you know, everybody's got their own mechanism of doing it. So, you know, I can tell you that, I don't wanna say most, but most members of the co-op are using this contract. I mean, you look at the price, and it's not just the work, it's not just the product, it's the labor too. You know, so there will be absolutely no increase, and that's one of those things you know, you know, right off the bat. I wouldn't want to guess how many municipalities, but most municipalities using paving work that are members of this, you know, cooperative purchasing agreement that's been around for almost forty years, you know, are using this.
What would prevent a business from getting involved with the co-ops?
Absolutely nothing.
Do you, are you required to take jobs then when they come up? Do you have to go work? Let's say, for example, you say, I only want to work in Union and Middlesex County. Do you then have to go do work in Atlantic County?
Uh, no, the co-ops, for contracts like this, the co-op is divided into regions. There's three regions. It is not Atlantic County, it's, I'm probably gonna miss them, but it's Morris and pretty much every town that touches Morris County, every county that touches. So, there's eight counties, you know, pretty much the northern part of the state. And even that northern section is divided into three sections. So, you're never going down south, you know, you're probably not going over to Hudson County, you know, you're probably in this district, you know, the towns are pretty much, you know, Union, some of Middlesex, some of Morris, kind of just defending, but yeah, it's just within the region.
But if you, if you were to be awarded, so basically, the bids are done through the co-op, and let's say you're the lowest bidder for granite curb work. Every time somebody goes to the co-op for granite co-work, granite curb work, you're the person doing that job?
If it's in that region, yes. And prior to the bid going out, every town, and we get them, is sent an estimated quantity sheet. So, we send that back to the co-op, and they send that out to the contractors with the bid, so the contractor is fully aware of the work that they might be undertaking. You know, could a contractor maybe decline to do work in one town because he can't handle it, or he's too small, sure. But I'm sure if a contractor starts turning down all jobs and says he's the only one who did one, he's gonna lose contract.
But isn't that like a mental injury to somebody locally who, you know, might want to give us a better price if we put it on the street, and it's not locking him into a situation where he might be required to go up north, you know, to meet that bid, which might not be in one's interest?
Well, two responses to that. One of them, it goes back to the impossibility of comparing it. It's easy for somebody to wait till the bids get unsealed and say, I could do a better price.
Jerry, you know, I would not be a proponent of something like that.
No, I know, but theoretically, that's, I've been hearing this for six years, I'm not picking on it.
But I mean, how do you prevent it? The way you prevent it is, you make certain that everyone, you know, so you don't get the scuttlebutt, has a shot, understands what's possible here. I mean, you know, listen, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we have to adhere to home rule. I'm concerned about getting the best quality and the best price.
I am.
And I'm sure, I know you are feeling the same way, I just, I guess I have a confidence issue here.
But also best practice. You know, best practice, too. You can get a lot of things cheaper, but it doesn't always adhere to best practice.
You're not gonna get any disagreement with me. I just have, see a lot of going to this one particular co-op and, of late, and I've been one who's been outspoken about tightening up our procurement procedures. This is a considerable amount of money, again, and just trying to do what's right for citizens of Scotch Plains, and I'm certain you are too. We may, we may, we may disagree, and maybe we just have to have more discussion and dialogue here to, you know, make one feel more comfortable that we are.
One more, on the fact, you know, yes, it's usually the Morris County co-op, because it's the largest, you know, by far in the state, it's not even close. So, we do use that more, and the reason we use that more is twofold. One, Middlesex co-op, which we do use, they provide a valuable service, they get paid on the amount of work that we use with them. Morris County co-op does not make one dime, whether we use one contractor, for fifty. We pay a membership fee, which is, I think, around nine hundred dollars a year to be a member. So, using their contractors, that fee covers their, basically, attorney and their engineers and their staff to, you know, write the specs, but using them, they don't get paid, there's no commission, they don't get any money from the contractor, there's no, unlike the Middlesex, which does. It's more similar to the state contract process. So, that's why that is the one that's ideally to be used, but we have used Middlesex, because they provided a service even with that additional commission to the co-op, made more sense to us.
Here's a motion to table. I second it. We need a roll call on that motion.
I would suggest before that, perhaps, for those people that are not certain about the process, the particular workshop that I suggested at the last meeting would be extremely valuable for them to attend, so that they can learn the intricacies of being a service provider at the co-op. Perhaps some of us would benefit from that education as well.
I would tell you, this is where it's scheduled to begin, April 28th.
No, I'm talking about...
No, I know, I know what you're saying, I just wanted to...
I would just like to interject. Jerry, for all three of these resolutions, April 28th?
And number twelve.
And number twelve.
And number twelve, okay. I mean, look, it's a worthy topic of discussion, I don't doubt that, and I think we all share the mayor's concerns and Councilwoman Jelenella's concerns. We all share those same concerns. You know, we're all up here trying to do the best we can for the town, and we certainly, I think, all agree that we want to get the best price for the work that has to be bid out for various services. But I guess I would suggest that if you consider the possibility of doing your own bid, I mean, there's certainly no guarantee you're gonna do any better in terms of price than you're gonna do with regard to using these co-ops. I mean, is that, is that fair to say?
I'm sorry?
I mean, there's no guarantee that if you do your own bid, you're gonna get any better price than going through the co-op. In fact, you may end up doing, you could end up doing worse.
You could do worse, and then you're stuck to that.
Because, I mean, you know, quite honestly, I mean, I understand the concerns that the mayor has suggested, but I think they're all possible doing it at the local level, too. So, you know, I certainly think that based upon your synopsis of how these co-ops work, in particular in Morris County, I mean, it certainly sounds like an appropriate and efficient way for us to utilize bids for vendors for these types of services.
Can we call a roll? Motion to table.
So, we're calling the roll on the motion to table.
That's right, there's a motion on the table, it's the second, and the motion is to table. To further investigate.
Mrs. Jelenella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
No.
Mr. Vastin?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Okay, so we've had a motion to table, and it can stand, so I guess we have, I'm gonna ask for a motion to move this.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move the consent agenda consisting of resolution number 2014-73, awarding contract to D and L Paving for granite curb work under the Morris County co-op in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand. Resolution number 2014-74, authorizing the township to award contract to Denville Line Painting under the Morris County co-op in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand. Resolution number 2014-75, authorizing the township to award contract to TILCON for paving and milling under the Morris County co-op in an amount not to exceed five hundred eighty thousand.
Second?
Second. Can we please call the roll?
Mrs. Jelenella?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastin?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Nay. Okay, we're gonna move on to other new business, for brevity's sake, I mean, we alluded to it a second ago. I'm gonna make a motion to table 2014-76, which ties to the previous motion that you've all approved. Is there a second? Because we have to go through this routine.
I second the motion to table. I think we included that in the, in the previous, though, Mayor.
I don't...
It's not part of the consent agenda.
No, you have to, we discussed it, so...
You have to vote on it, so...
Okay.
So, may we have a vote on tabling it, please?
Mrs. Jelenella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
No.
Mr. Vastin?
No.
Mayor Glover?
I said aye to tabling it. That said, may I have a motion to move resolution 2014-76?
Yes, I'd like to move for approval, resolution number 2014-76, authorizing township to award a contract to Campbell Foundry Company for catch basins and manhole castings.
There's a second.
Under the Morris County co-op in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand.
I apologize.
That's right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we call the roll?
Can we just have a brief discussion? Just have one question?
Of course, if you have one question, of course. You can have two questions.
Thank you. Is, Jerry, I'm just interested, is there anything different about this than the previous three resolutions, and as to why it's under other new business rather than the consent agenda?
Just, everything's the same, just because it wasn't ready in time for the consent agenda, or in time for the agenda for the last conference meeting.
Okay.
With that, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Jelenella?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastin?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Nay. Moving right along, may I have a motion to move resolution number 2014-77?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, resolution appointing special counsel for the township of Scotch Plains pursuant to local public's contract law, statute is referred in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. James, can we get some commentary here before we're asked to vote?
Sure. Based on the discussion that we've had in the last executive session and the subsequent discussions I've had with individual members of council on this matter, I'm requesting the use of a special counsel to look into a matter as it relates to personnel. That's all I'm legitimately allowed to say in public session.
Thank you very much.
I have a question that I think...
Questions for the manager?
I, that is okay for, I, okay.
Go for it. We'll turn to the other side.
I thought our conversation was that based on the dollar amounts, that you could do this under manager's prerogative. You could make this five thousand dollar appointment.
He can, but under the, under your form of government, he, your manager, since he sees a contract, all contracts, under your form of government, all contracts have to be approved by the governing body. He has a right to oppose contracts, but the actual authorization to approve the contract is a governing body function.
Then who is the firm that we are approving? I didn't see it on the attachment, on the, when I looked on the, through the app, I'm not seeing it. And I'm asking who, because we did vote at the reorganization to appoint labor counsel and to appoint conflict counsel.
It's on the agenda item that the law firm is Get Hard in Key North Clinton, New Jersey. The conflict counsel is also the land use attorney, which would present somewhat of a conflict there. So, our conflict counsel actually has conflict, and our, you know, one of our labor attorneys is from Jeff's law firm. And, you know, we think that, you know, that's the reason we're hiring that is, you know, Jeff was somewhat involved.
We have a different labor attorney, and last year when we had a conflict with Judy Verone was unable to, there was something, Judy had a conflict based on something, another township that she...
Health department.
The health department. Okay, so the labor counsel assisted us. Why wouldn't we go to the other labor counsel that we already appointed?
You know, primarily, in my mind, because that he was just appointed to, you know, be the labor counsel for contract negotiation review. The firm that we're, that I'm proposing to you today is somebody who has extensive experience in the municipal public sector, especially as it relates to, you know, insurance issues and, you know, investigation issues as it relates to various, you know, lawsuits and things. Not that that's the case here, but investigative issues related to those things in municipal government. It's a, you know, very well-known firm in this area. So, that, but that's why, that was my reason, because he was the contract attorney, I'm sorry, he was the labor attorney for contracts, so I really didn't give that much consideration.
Quite frankly, I'm not, I should have asked the question differently. The question I was asking was, what I should have asked was, was this one of the attorneys we appointed at the beginning of the year?
No.
And, okay, that's, so my concern is this. Obviously, as township manager, I understand you have a lot to do in running the day-to-day operations of the township, and if you have a concern, by all means, it needs to be addressed. My concern is, just based on past practice from last year, this is something that we just did eight months ago, you know, where we use our other labor counsel to deal with something when, for whatever reason, we didn't use conflict counsel last year. So, I just don't know why we're not keeping with the practice that just occurred.
I wasn't, you know, I wasn't here when that practice started. I mean, I was here when it was kind of in place. For me, you know, being around this in New Jersey for six years, the first firm that came to mind was this one as it relates to this stuff. So, that's why I, you know, came to this conclusion. I mean, I sat in seminars where, you know, they were represented as presenters and things like that, so that's why. I didn't, you know, the past practice, I'm not sure, you know, what the reasoning was before, you know, on the health issue. I do know the conflict Judy represented the city that we were using, so that's why. But, so that's why, that's how I formed my decision.
We interviewed all of those attorneys earlier in the year, clearly the conflict, all of folks. And I guess I'm just curious, again, to follow up on the councilwoman's thoughts. Would there be an objection to using one of the people that, you know, we've already gone through the process with? I mean, is this that sensitive a case that we have no confidence that we can get an unbiased, you know, study done here, or investigation?
I believe there's definitely sensitivity to it. I'm not going to, certainly not going to say any other law firm couldn't handle it by any stretch. I'm just, you know, based on my experiences and with this firm, what I know they can do, you know, based on what I've seen over the years, that's why they were the first one that came to mind. And, you know, I think a lot of people in my position probably would, if you put in the same position, this would be one of the firms they think of in Northern Jersey. That's why, you know, it came to mind. I didn't see, you know, the interview process that we used for the attorneys during reorg were certainly extensive because they were, you know, much bigger contracts that required much more day-to-day operational assistance. You know, municipal attorney, labor attorney, bond attorney, and tax appeal attorney. You know, whereas this is a small, you know, five thousand, not to exceed five thousand dollar amount at the same hourly rate as Jeff's firm. So, that was my reasoning, you know.
The five thousand dollar amount, you know, you know, here's the problem. We heard five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, five thousand at about a hundred meetings last year because of the sewer, because we didn't, we didn't interview them. And now we're awarding a five thousand dollar contract to another firm that we're not interviewing. So, and actually, that is incorrect. Only one, I believe, one member of the council did have an opportunity with the CFO to interview the firm that did the sewer study. So, my concern is, I mean, let's just be consistent. If, if members of this council who currently sit here tonight had concerns about the five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, then we're acting irresponsibly if we vote to approve another company for five thousand dollars without interviewing them. So, since we've already interviewed the other attorneys, and we know that at least one firm doesn't seem to have any, any conflict at all, why not just use that firm?
I would like to comment on that. I mean, I don't agree with your characterization if you say we're acting irresponsibly. I don't feel I'd be acting irresponsibly to vote on this. I know who the firm is. You know, if you feel that way yourself, that's your decision. But I don't, I don't wish to be included in that, and I don't think that it's a fair characterization.
Well, I'm, Councilman Marcus, I appreciate your comments, but I'm referring back to the comments that were made, and I wish that we had access to all of our minutes up here now for how many times we heard about the five thousand dollar sewer study last year, and that, I mean, let's really look at what this...
No, I understand what you're saying, but to say it's irresponsible is not, is not accurate.
I'm sorry, Councilman Marcus, I was speaking. I really do appreciate being treated with some respect up here.
I certainly try to do that.
The five thousand dollar number is ironic, given the number of times we heard this last year. And I'm very reluctant to cast a vote that would weaken any member of this council's standing based on some of the concerns that were put forward in the past by more than one member of this council about the five thousand dollar contract that was given to a firm that had been vetted. So, given the fact that we all took numerous, numerous hours to interview attorneys, we have attorneys that we hired, at least although we've had the conversation that some firms seem to possibly have a conflict, there is one firm that we voted and hired that does not. I would like either the opportunity to interview the firm being put in front of us, or I would ask that the manager use firms that we've already voted on as a council on our, at our reorganization meeting.
Can I just make one comment, and my firm is, obviously can't participate, but the powers of the manager are, he has the right under the statutory power to investigate, investigate the affairs of any municipal officer or department. That's one of his powers. And he's suggesting that you use an independent municipal firm whose qualifications, I know them, they do a significant amount of municipal work. So, the logic of this is that he's suggesting you use an independent and an objective firm that's not really part of the, quote, municipal family, for reasons. And so, I'm only throwing that out there to you because, yes, you have interviewed a firm, a labor counsel, but do you really logically want to do that? He's suggesting you use someone independent and to investigate, under his powers to investigate. And I'm just throwing it out there because I think logically, that's really what he's suggesting.
I understand that, but by, the end of my conversation with him, and I apologize because I really misunderstood this, was that this is within his purview as a manager so that we would not, and I, Jerry, and I want to put words in your mouth. I'm telling you what I understood. I didn't think we would be asked to vote on this firm, because at that time, I would have said, "Let's interview the firm." And it wasn't on the conference meeting agenda, or I would have said, "Can we interview the firm between the conference and the business meeting?" So, I, my apologies for misunderstanding, but I, just for a point of clarification. And absolutely, as I've already said, if there's a concern, Jerry, about something that's not right, do what you need to do to make it right.
I think, and I can't, I honestly don't remember the exact words I used.
Yeah, it was the fire alarm, we were outside, it was...
Yeah, and we chatted very briefly on the steps.
Yes.
So, I, what I was probably, what I was trying to convey, and maybe it didn't work properly because of the situation at the time, was that, you know, it's within my right, as Jeff said, you know, to do the investigation. I wouldn't have conveyed that it was within my, or I wouldn't have intended to convey that it was within my right to just pick the firm and use them. So, that might have been...
I thought that the, and I'm, again, my, I'm putting the blame on myself for misunderstanding.
I may have spoken the wrong way, too, so it's, I just don't...
So, but I distinctly remember conversation alluding to the, you know, because it's below the bid threshold, which is why, and a conversation about bid threshold would be, that's unlike me to kind of, you know, so that's why I just, I was surprised, and I, you know, I just, I don't, I just want to interview them. That's all. I mean, you know, five thousand dollars is a lot of money. We want to make sure that we're spending our money responsibly and that we're interviewing anybody that we hire to be consistent with some of the concerns that have been brought forward in the past about five thousand dollars.
I think the only reason why I would, you know, again, absolutely respectfully, you know, disagree with the interview process is because the nature of the use of the attorney is investigatory. And that's why, because it's a personnel employee investigation, or a personnel employee or departmental investigation. And, you know, that's why the independent nature, while you have to technically approve the contract, I would personally, you know, agree with Jeff's, quite, like, reasoning, whether, not saying I agree with it, but his reasoning, you know, as to why the interview process, you know, outside the municipal family should be a little different than when we hire the attorneys who do significant amounts of work for us. So, I understand.
But is there something that would prevent us from being able to interview this firm?
I mean, timing, obviously. You know, we want to, you know, get moving. You know, he was, so the firm is capable enough to, I waited till, you know, two of the people came back from their vacations to really get this going. But really, timing, you know, to get things going and, you know, to get it over and done with as fast as possible. I mean, that's really my primary issue here. And again, I just think the interview process, considering the nature of the issue, might not be in the best interest of the township. That's just my opinion. I absolutely respect your opinion. I understand where you're coming from. I just, I disagree.
I would like that every conversation I have with my daughter ever, every argument sounds like this, all this respectful disagreement. Thank you.
I do. And listen, were you, a long time ago, I was a council person, so, believe me, I know where you're all coming from.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I would just add on that, you know, when we were going through our police merger, we went and, someone took license of hiring a consultant for four thousand dollars and not vetting them through the whole council. And I thought that was not the appropriate thing to do. And that was four thousand. This is five thousand dollars. It's kind of like, we've been there, we've done that. So, I would tend to agree with Councilwoman Jill Anella that, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it's five thousand dollars. I mean, we could have a nil increase if we had ninety thousand. This is five thousand dollars of it. So, that said, let's put it to a vote.
If I may, Mayor, I think there's a bit of a difference in these scenarios. Last year, and in the previous year, when we were looking to hire the consultant on the police merger, there was a majority of council at one point that had supported hiring an independent consultant. Last year, when we were asked to hire the sewer utility person, the same thing held true, is that the council, or members of the council, brought forward a firm. This is different in the regard that this is not someone on the council bringing this firm forward. This is our township manager who is a professional and who understands that, what he believes needs to be done. So, the two previous circumstances where there was a consultant that was going to, that was being contemplated to be hired, was actually never hired, was being brought forward by the council, not the manager. And last year, the consultant for the sewer utility was brought forward by the council and not the manager. And if it was the manager, it was the interim manager who did not have the experience of a full-time manager. Thank you.
I, Mayor, I'd like to address Councilman Vastine's concerns.
I'll allow you to go, and then I'll say that that's just not true.
Just to, because, again, to, you know, I really do listen. Sometimes I don't look like I, I'm hearing everything you say, but I hear it. And the Sicilian in me, you know, we don't forget. So, I remember the conversation is, we've been asked not to reinvent history. So, I would say this, let's not reinvent history on what went on last year because the accuracy of that statement should reflect the fact that, based on a concern that the sewer fee needed to be studied, there had been conversations between then-manager Henry Underhill and Mayor Glover, along with myself. What happened from that point forward was that there were also conversations with the auditing firm. Through the auditing firm, Mr. Underhill obtained the name of the company to do the sewer study. So, there is nothing inconsistent. Mr. Jimes is the manager. He's putting it forward. I understand that. But I just want to make sure that I'm really holding everybody true to their word. If we have a problem with spending five thousand dollars without all the full council being able to interview the firm, then we should have a problem every time we spend five thousand dollars without the full council being able to interview the firm.
I don't want to get into a conversation about consistency here, because if I really need to, I could illustrate many instances of hypocritical behavior on the part of members of this council. I think at this point, the best thing to do is to end this discussion and to vote and to move on. These meetings are supposed to be efficient and streamlined, and unfortunately, they are far from it. So, can we...
We can take the vote, but in fairness... A lot of this wasn't vetted at our conference meeting, sir.
None of it was.
So, recognizing that, so let's be consistent, Deputy Mayor. The fact is, we learned a lot more today about this firm than we knew when it, two weeks ago, when we were abruptly told about it during a fire alarm. But, listen, I agree with you. I don't want to belabor it. You had a chance to comment.
One final comment, please, Mayor, respectfully. I think the people in the audience and the people at home should understand that when we're up here, we're not limited to what we talk about up here and what information is gained during the course of these council meetings. We're all free to discuss ad nauseam any issue we want with our town manager, with our town attorney, with our CFO, with other council members, within the limits of the law. So, and I know I certainly engage in many conversations with our professionals before we get to these meetings. Everyone has the opportunity to do that. So, no one should go into these meetings blind or not understanding what we're talking about in any particular resolution ordinance, any topic whatsoever. We all have the ability to do that. I don't come to these meetings without knowing what it is I'm going to do when I get to these meetings, at least in terms of the issues. Yes, you may learn some more, but if you don't feel you don't know enough about it, you, everyone is free to discuss these issues with our personnel to gather information, to prepare for these meetings, and that applies at all times. And this is no exception to that.
My only response to that, since you felt necessary to respond to it. I think you've probably been the most outspoken when it comes to things showing up on a council agenda that hadn't been previously vetted.
I agree with it.
And just for the record, you know, I know personally that I reached, spoke as late as today with Mr. Jimes. I had reached out, you know, on a matter the other day where, for whatever reason, he was unavailable, and we only got together to talk just recently. So...
Well, we've known about this for weeks.
The idea is, I think people's intent is to do the right thing.
Yes.
To come here as prepared as you can, you know, councilmen, but, you know, if you don't have the information and it's not forthcoming, that's all we're doing. So, I think we're all trying to operate in the best interest of the town. I don't want to say one person on this council does it better than the other, but, you know, knowledge is power. So, that said, the one thing I will agree with you on is, let's take a vote. Please call the roll. We've introduced it. We've had it seconded.
Mrs. Jill Anella?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Nay. Okay, may I have a motion to move resolution 2014-78?
Yes, I'd like to move for approval, resolution 2014-78, appointing Timothy Hoffman, Inc., real estate appraisers and consultants for tax appeal appraisal services, municipal valuations for twenty-four... and Consultants for Tax Appeal Appraisal Services, Municipal Evaluations for 2014 pursuant to the Local Public Contracts Law in an amount not to exceed... Jerry, I did ask you about this. His prices are listed on the resolution.
Yeah, the hourly prices and the prices per type of appraisal are listed on the resolution, but the not to exceed is thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. James?
Uh, this is the same person we've been using in the town for some time. Um, I consulted with Mr. Ross, our tax assessor, and he recommends, continue review.
Thank you very much. With that, is there any other commentary before I call the roll? Ms. Lucina, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jolinella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Bastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye.
May I have a motion to move Resolution, uh, 214, 2014-79, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move Resolution 2014-79, awarding 2014 tub grinding of vegetative waste services, uh, contract to Reliable Wood Products LLC of Jersey City in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
There you go, a little competition here. Uh, Mr. James, you're already going.
All right, first and second's done. Now, we had one bidder on this contract, and Jeff has reviewed it. Everything's consistent. All the, no material defects. Jeff, if you confirm that, then it's good to be voted on.
There are no defects at all. Contract is fully compliant.
Okay, um, any comments?
I do.
Please?
So are we not going to mulch?
I wouldn't definitely preclude it, but I think this year, we're a little late in the game to start a new contract. I think we really have to, you know, be looking at 2015 to make that significant change.
Do you understand why I would be mildly frustrated, considering I've been talking about mulch since I think probably the second meeting that I served on the council?
Yeah, no, and, again, can't speak to what predates me, but, you know, with the new director coming on board, you know, just relatively recently, it just, our timeframe for that just really, you know, he's got extensive knowledge of it, and our timeframe for that just would not have been available.
Because I want the residents to understand, this is forty-five thousand dollars, and then we're going to talk about having to hire somebody to dispose of it. And, I mean, what's the approximate cost of, of number sixteen going to be?
Well, that's actually, we don't know, because that's going to be a rejection of bids, because the bids came in. That's just, you know.
But we've done it in the past. I mean, what, what's the ballpark, plus or minus ten thousand dollars?
I don't have those numbers.
Sorry, Jerry, I should have told you that. I mean, just, you know, my concern is we're going, we went nowhere with this. It's, it's several months of conversation. I was even able to bring a mulch sample from a neighboring town. Um, it's very disappointing. I walked today. I saw people on every street that I walked on laying mulch. It's expensive. This is one of the very minimal services that we could be providing to our residents. If you're looking for an answer to number sixteen, it's not really important. I mean, the bottom line is, we're not going to do it. We're doing the exact same thing that we did last year and forever and ever before that. And my issue isn't with you, but I've been bringing this forward for a long time. So that's all I have to say about that.
Please, anyone else?
No.
All right, oh, certainly, I'm glad you brought that forward again. It would be a nice thing to be able to do, but it sounds like we're not, again, in position to do it. So, Ms. Lucina, would you please call the roll? We need to get this work done.
Mrs. Jolinella?
Ms. Jolinella?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Bastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Uh, I have a motion to move Resolution 2014-80, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move Resolution Number 2014-80, rejecting the 2014 loading, hauling, and disposal of vegetative waste 2014 and authorizing rebid.
Is there a second? A second. Mr. James?
Uh, this bid was reject, uh, rejected for one of the reasons we alluded to earlier, Kim coming in in excess of the estimate. I'll let Jeff speak to the legal terminology.
One, a few bases to, to reject a bid is, um, is that it came over the budgeted cost estimate, it was inappropriate, and this is one of those bids where it did come in over, so you do have the ability to reject.
Well, we, we weren't allowed to find out with that estimate. Why now? And now I, now I am curious.
It was significant enough where they rejected it, so they're going to go out and bid, and this time, kind of make sure, and again, I'm sorry for not having the number off the top of my head, but they're going to go out to bid this time and make sure, you know, we get some, a wider range of people. This is not a contract that's available on any of our cooperative purchasing agreements, so that's why we have to go back and bid on it.
We are not saying right now that the prices that we got from the co-op were too high.
No, I'm saying it's not available. They don't have this service.
Because everybody else is mulching. Probably. All right, thank you.
I think this is.
Uh, an aye vote, right?
A motion to adopt the resolution.
Right, yeah. We have a motion to adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no one. May I have a motion to move bill resolution, uh, the bill resolution, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move the bill list in the amount of nine million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars, eighty-three cents.
Is there a second? Is there a second, please? Jones, did you second it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone have a comment on the bill list from Mr. James? Hearing none. Can we call the roll, please?
Mrs. Jolinella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Bastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Uh, next item on our agenda, and I think you may have some comments. You said you were going to defer to this point. Uh, council comment?
Um, I have several comments. I, I do want to thank the resident who took the time to approach the microphone today, um, asking that the township consider the idea of paying taxes, um, online with credit cards. I know that my, um, my income tax was able to be, um, debited out of my checking account. And that is something that obviously helped us, not having to go and, and mail something, put a stamp on it and mail it. Um, but on top of which, I'm fairly certain that the fees for the state are less than paying the in, the percentage, percentages associated with credit cards. So that's something I just want to make sure that we're careful of moving forward. I'm all about conveniences for the residents, but if we could set up something where the accounts can be debited, that to me may be, um, more efficient moving forward, because if we start talking about three percent credit card fees, um, that really could add up to a significant amount of money.
The towns that usually do that with the credit card, they give both options, just like you said. And the credit card one, it's, the fees passed on to the user all the time. I, part of the company that I'm looking at to do our citizen request management slash three eleven system actually has that service, so I have been looking into it. Uh, you know, now with your approval, the bond organization, I would probably see something coming forward.
But I find a special irony in the fact that we're talking about convenience of paying taxes when so many of our residents continue to pay their taxes through their mortgage payments, as most homes are mortgaged. Ironically, what's the one thing that we can't pay through the mortgage company that has to have a stamp and be mailed or dropped off to the township is the sewer utility. So, what we're going to talk about, and, and, you know, let's just get the language straight. It is a tax. It is something that we are putting forward. If we're going to be worried about conveniences for residents, that's just another additional reason to do everything we can to make sure that that is part of the property taxes, because it is terribly inconvenient to have to come down here or go out and get a stamp. I don't have stamps in my home, and I'm sure I'm not unique. You don't have stamps. I know you don't. So, I mean, it's, um, it, it's, it, it's time-consuming, and if we could do a better job there, that's another excellent reason to deal with that sewer utility. Um, in the absence of an environmental commission, which will be my next question, I just wanted to, um, remind everybody that May is National Bike Safety Month and ask that for the council conference meeting, we put on the agenda the idea, um, Jerry, and I know I've emailed you the information in the past, the complete streets of adopting a complete streets policy. So that everybody understands the connection for the environmental piece as well. Complete streets would also allow us to accrue points to becoming a sustainable community through the Sustainable Jersey Program. When you bec- when you are a sustainable community through the Sustainable Jersey Program, you are also entitled to grants. Grants that can do things like deal with Brookside Park, like deal with the Terry Lou Zoo. So, these are all pieces of the pie that come together when you take the time to really know the big picture. So it's something that I'm very passionate about. Um, also, just given the fact that we have so many runners and so many cyclists in the community, Fanwood also just adopted their policy, and this is particularly important because our kids go to the same schools. So you have feeder, you know, feeding in from the same town, and so much of it, and I know you run through town, you could be on, in Fanwood, and then you're in Scotch Plains and not even know it. The policy's there. We don't have it here, so there's some work to do with that particular issue. I want to say that the most pleasant news that I got this week was a conversation with the manager when he assured me that our increases for our department heads will be tied to their performance evaluations. Jerry, I want to thank you very much for taking those steps. I know you have a lot of work to do to put an evaluation system in place, but this idea that we've been handing out raises and salaries have reached to the level that they have is completely unacceptable, given the fact that performance evaluations have not been done on our department heads. Jeff, where are we at with the idea of looking at the salary ordinance and seeing what we can do to get some of these salaries under control? Uh, specifically for our non-union, our exclusionary, our department heads?
Um, I have touched on that a little bit, and let Jeff follow on. I have looked at the salary ordinance, um, in detail. I've taken all of the salaries for non-unionized employees into the spreadsheet, put the minimum and the maximum in that spreadsheet. What I then did after that was reduce the top end of each salary by two, by seven, and ten percent. I ran it four different ways. Let me clarify that. I didn't do that. My fellow trusty intern did that.
Did he really?
Yeah. So, I know how to do it, but, you know, I am self-literate, but just to give him credit for that. So, he actually did, did do that.
I'm so proud of him. That's good to know. Thank you.
So then what you look at next is, if you decrease, you have to do it across the board. You know, any reduction in salary ordinance has to be done to every single individual. If you decrease it by two percent, being the minimum, the question has to be asked, do you affect anybody, you know, in the township? And you do, right off the bat. Uh, you affect, you know, at least one person in the township. It doesn't get to the point where it lowers their salary, but it gets to the point where they're pretty much denied any increase going forward based on the salary ordinance. Now, the problem with that is, that employee, and actually, I think another one, but definitely one, is one of the protected employees considered in statute that says you can't deny a raise, you know, as long as you're using a similar mechanism to evaluate the employees as everybody else. So if I were to, you know, do an evaluation like I would and use the same matrix that I'm using, and based on a matrix, that person is entitled, in my mind, too, I'm making a number up, that's never going to happen, ten percent raise. That's why I'm using that number. Um, I wouldn't be able to do that. But the same person who is entitled to the same level of raise would be entitled to that. Now, that would be against the law because that's one of those employees that's protected, and they're, have to be treated exactly the same way as everybody else. So we're in a situation, and this predates probably everybody on council, that, you know, the ranges were established. Some people, a couple people are too close to the top of that range. There were any adjustment to the salary ordinance negatively affects them, which rendered, which would render that, you know, invalid because you can't decrease the salary or withhold a salary increase to one of your four protected employees, which are, uh, the assessor, collector, CFO, and clerk, and the municipal clerk. So, they're the four protected employees. Um, I have, I dealt with this precise issue in the last round that I was in, so this didn't take a lot of research on my end. It's just something that I actually dealt with, um, on a very similar level. So, you know, if you were to reduce it by two percent, you wouldn't decrease somebody's salary, but you effectively would increase the salary freeze, and nobody would ever be entitled to a raise.
If you, if you decrease it by two percent, what happens?
One of the employees that are protected is at so close to the top end of their range, they would never get another salary increase, which would mean nobody would ever get another salary increase, ever. Because if you were going to give it to other people, that person would have to be treated the same.
You know, and I hate that we're in a position where we're essentially talking about one individual because that obviously is not the intention of this. But I think it's really important for the public to understand that we have, I mean, right off the top of my head, when you talk about longevity, longevity and benefits, more than one person costing the township two hundred thousand dollars a year, more than two hundred thousand dollars a year, when you add up all of the line items. There are multiple salaries that exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's just salary. When you start to add in, this is a lot of money. These are not pennies. And it's frustrating for me that we can't do anything about it. I don't want to hurt anybody, and I appreciate the job that people do for us. But my position is that the money should really be where it impacts the residents the most. If we could hire an extra DPW person, if we can hire another police officer with that money and better serve our residents, that's the right way to handle it. Um, but what I'm hearing from you, that there's not, there's essentially nothing we can do.
It essentially renders the issue moot. Uh, I, I think, you know, and we've done this analysis, and I think it's important for the record, you know, despite the fact that, yes, I mean, on the surface, we have non-union, well, one, I don't remember the last time increases were given, not including longevity. So as union employees have been getting increases, our management has been, you know, essentially flat for the last couple of years. That's actually not uncommon.
They've gotten two percent increases last year. That's two percent, no evaluation. I'm positive of that.
Then I'll stand corrected. I was under another pressure, and I stand corrected. Um, but the average cost of a non-union salary, well, no, I'm sorry, non-salary, the average cost of a non-union employee in this township, including benefits, pension, that extensive spreadsheet that I handed out to everybody a couple of weeks ago, is around seventy-nine thousand dollars. The average cost of a member of the Public Property and Recreation Union is ninety-two thousand dollars, and the average cost of a police officer is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So while there might be, there's certainly a few people that have been here for a very long time that are on that very top end, it doesn't even come close to compare to the average cost of a police officer or a member of the Public Works for Recreation.
I just want to make sure that I'm expressing myself very clearly, and I will continue this when we talk, when we talk about the budget publicly. I'm not talking about the person who's making seventy thousand, eighty thousand dollars a year, and certainly not talking about the people making fifty-six thousand dollars a year. I'm talking about the fact that while we had people who for three years couldn't pay their property taxes in Scotch Plains, we were increasing municipal department head salaries to a point where we have more than one person who, at the end of the day, if you go across that line item, is exceeding two hundred thousand dollars. The state has made movements every which way to cap superintendent salaries to really be responsible as far as the administrative cost in government. I'm just saying, I don't feel that some of these salaries are responsible. It's not, I have a great personal affinity to some, I mean, it, but it's, 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 it's not right. It's not right to the taxpayers of Scotch Plains. It just isn't. So, but essentially, if there's nothing we can do about it, there's nothing we can do about it.
May Jeff, if you want to clarify anything?
I'm just trying to find the session, but, you know, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the session that I talked about last time.
Jeff, maybe we could just have a conversation offline, because it's been three meetings and we haven't had that conversation, so we could just maybe follow up and see exactly where we're going.
Could, could I ask a question? Um, I mean, we hear the terminology, it's just not fair to the taxpayers. Do we know what's fair to the taxpayers? I mean, what are we basing that on? I, I know for a fact that when you look at some of those employees of the town and you take the, the responsibilities that they have, and you add up all of those lines, and you compare them with other towns of our size, of our structure in the state of New Jersey, most of our employees' salaries are down in the very bottom of that list. When you start looking at the net effect, dollar effect, of those department heads on our budget, on our total cost, compared with other towns of the same size, of the same government type, i.e. manager, council, our employees, net dollars, are in the lower third of comparable towns as far as net dollars are concerned. I'll be happy to share that spreadsheet with anybody who's interested, but I think we should be very clear that there's a difference between an opinion of what is high and what is low. is low versus a fact of what is high and low in relative terms. Now, people on Wall Street make a lot more money than that, but we can't compare the two. In this particular case, I'm talking about the comparison of specific titles versus specific titles in net dollars. And I would be happy to share that list with anybody who has interest in seeing how Scotch Plains compares.
Jerry, I take that away from our conversation yesterday and from looking, I assume, at the same spreadsheet.
You refer something totally different.
Okay. So, our conversation, I believe that we have a few salaries that are exceeding the state average. I mean, I, I just want to make sure I'm not exactly...
My analysis did not have anything to do with, you know, comparing them to other towns. I, I've done that on other issues, you know, in other places, and they're probably the same, but council investees, something that you did totally different, so I don't, I have, well, the expectation is...
I mean, just because I, I know that, you know, again, there's the memory piece where we just talked about...
No, no, I don't disagree.
No, no, do, do, doing due diligence.
No, no, I'm just following up to what you said, which is, Ms. Delara, can we get together with the councilwoman? And then let's have this discussed at our next conference meeting, please?
Okay.
I think it's not an unreasonable request.
Next question. Where are we at with the Environmental Commission?
Last update on that was, is that totally common? I mean, essentially, where we are was the opinion of the, do you want to give the opinion of the attorney? Is it your attorney?
The opinion, my opinion was that, that appointments to the Environmental Commission are made by managers. It's not a mayor or...
Mayor, you should hear this. It's important.
Appointments to the Environmental Commission are made by the manager under your form of government. So, it's, I've talked to Jerry about this, and they are his appointments. If it's not been done that way in the past, well, that's the way your form of government works, is that, under Section 98 of the, of the Faulkner Act, 40469A-98, any power, general power, appointment power, other than the power, let me reiterate, any provision of general law concerning the appointment power or other power upon a mayor, other executive head of a municipality shall be construed as meaning the municipal, municipal manager and municipality governed under your form of government essentially. And the appointments with power exercised by the municipal manager, according to this judge provision, shall be classified and given the same force and effect as if executed by the official named therein. The only thing that is an exception to that is the Board of Education and the trustees of the public library. But the actual appointment power to the Environmental Commission is made by the manager.
I can make this relatively quick. I think the, the primary concern that I had with respect to this issue was some inconsistencies in the statute as it related to whether or not a member of the Environmental Commission had to be a member of the planning board. It certainly appears that way sometimes, but then there were some relatively recent case law that negates that. That was my overall concern as far as why, basically, we waited till that final opinion came out. So, it's the opinion of the attorney that a member of the Environmental Commission does not have to be a member of the planning board. Correct? Which essentially alleviates the only concern I really had. I had no concerns about the members of the commission. My concern was, you know, is that going to really mess up some of the issues that had already been going on in the planning board, because it may not have been done properly? A literal reading of the statute, I think, you know, my point was relatively fair, and until you did the case research, you realized it was different. So, you know, that's where that came in. So, I'm happy with Jeff's final opinion on that. You know, so to that end, you know, I don't have the names off the top of my head, but whoever's been appointed in the past, consider them appointed.
Well, can they be, so then can they be trained and meet and get to work?
Yeah, no, so what will happen there is, I'll pick whoever the chairperson is and whoever it was that the mayor named, I'll name that person. Evan?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, so whoever that was, I mean, and again, my only primary concern was the planning board issue, and I didn't want to have any legal issues with respect to any applications, so...
Most people aren't on the planning board, so it solves that problem.
Yeah, but they almost would, we thought they would have had to have been, that's the problem. So, basically, what's going to happen is, you know, I'll reach out to the NJAC community, that's the, I guess, the League of Municipalities for Environmental Commissions, will effectuate a payment of a couple hundred dollars to make them members, and then those people are the, they're the trainer group. They're the ones that say, all right, let's get together, let's talk about your roles and responsibilities. They may have a different view on the planning board issue, so...
Well, it's case law.
Yeah, so, because their website says they have a, a view, but again, they may have a different view on the case law.
Sounds like we're okay with that. Okay? Do you have any other comments?
Yes, my last comment, and the mayor mentioned it before, and I just wanted to thank you for bringing that suggestion forward, but I'll happily tell you that with the, with some time this week, we were able to take the first steps in, in organizing our first ladies' night out in Scotch Plains, because there are multiple businesses. We actually have some nice new businesses that some of the women of Scotch Plains may be very interested in. So, the Cultural Arts Committee will be meeting soon, but we have a tentative date scheduled of June 26th, which is the last Thursday in June. The concept that's being, you know, kind of vetted at this point is a schools-out ladies' night out before July comes and everybody's on vacation. It would go, it would be happening on a Thursday nights, would be consistent with the summer concert series and the other cultural arts events. So, when the Cultural Arts Committee meets, I'm sure that the mayor will be reporting out as part of his reports on that.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment I'd like to make. And this is an issue that we've talked about before, and I'll keep it real brief, but it's ongoing, and that's why I just want to raise it for whomever might still be listening out there. There's a topic of interest arbitration, 2 percent cap. This council passed a resolution encouraging the, the legislature to adopt it and the government, governor to extend it. The history is that the legislature put forward a, a somewhat different proposal than, than is currently or was previously enforced, went to Governor Christie, it was conditionally vetoed. The result of that was approved by the Senate, and it's now waiting for action in the State Assembly. I would encourage people to contact their legislators and encourage the State Assembly to take this issue up for a vote. You know, usually, we don't like to, and I don't even like to wade into state issues from the, the municipal dais, but the reality is this particular issue directly affects us in our budgeting here. It's related to the 2 percent cap. You know, we've just introduced a budget tonight. We're under that 2 percent cap, but one of the biggest drivers of cost increases, and we've heard a lot of concern from the dais here about, about salaries, one of the biggest drivers of our, of our costs is, is salaries, and, and this is something that, that acts as a, as an important lever in, in the negotiations of those salaries with our, with our public sector unions. So, anyhow, that's my comment.
You may be aware, those still listening, that this council unanimously approved a measure supporting this position that Mr. Jones just articulated. I was invited by the governor's office to go down and to support it. I was there on the steps of the War Memorial this past Monday with the governor, met him twice, and supported it because I think it's absolutely essential. It's, it just is common sense. That said, the hour grows late. Do we have any other comments over here? All right, I, I have one, which was at our last conference meeting, I had proposed a public referendum to move the sewer utility back into the budget. It's clear that we missed this year's November deadline, but there's a possibility for May of 2015, and I just, Mr. Delara, you and I have talked about it, just doing the due diligence on that and see what it would take to put it out for, let the public decide what might be in their best interest. Obviously, there'll be a lot of discussion there, but we always talk about the public, and so proposing that public referendum to move the sewer utility back into the municipal budget. That said, Ms. LaSina, the hour does grow late, and I'm going to ask anyone else who wants to come to the microphone one last time. And with that, following that, we're going to go into executive session. If you would just follow right up, Ms. LaSina.
I'll be five minutes, three seconds.
What?
I'll be very brief in a second.
Well, I'm hoping you will be.
I'll be there.
No, no, I know someone is coming, and I said, but right following that, we're going to jump right into executive session, so we'll clear the courtroom of all the four people that are in here. One, two, three, five. Four includes our reporter from the alternative press. Thank you for staying.
I'll be brief. Jeff Noonan, I reside at 2054 Algonquin Drive. I wear two hats tonight, just briefly. I just wanted to let the council know, there's a, a company doing work on my street. They're doing, replacing the sewer mains and all the water stuff. The road is a mess. So, with my hat as a taxpayer resident, I'd like to call to the attention of the council that Algonquin Drive is just horrendously messed up. Counselor, it's good to see you. We're neighbors, it's good to see you again. The streets, Jerry, the street's in bad shape. There's bumps everywhere. I've stopped the guys and I've said, you know, I've asked them what they're doing about it, and they say, another crew's coming in another week to do something about it. So, that's my resident taxpayer hat. I would like to make a quick comment as my president of the library board hat. Just two points, things libraries involved in recently called to the attention. First and foremost, April is Autism Awareness Month. I don't know if everybody's aware of it, that the, our library is at the forefront of autism awareness in the state and actually throughout the nation. Meg Calia, our director, has done fantastic work with the rest of the staff to bring autism awareness to really the forefront of education. We do some phenomenal things. Meg travels the country and puts on lectures and does wonderful things with autism awareness. For the past six years, the volunteers from the Scotch Plains Public Library staff, they've run two very successful book clubs for young adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities at Panera Bread and Wachung on Tuesday evenings. We are the only library in, in New Jersey to do this. We recently received a state contract from, from the Library Link, New Jersey. It's a, it's a co-op, speaking of co-ops, to bring these book clubs to six more New Jersey libraries starting in September. There's no tax cost to the Scotch Plains residents of Scotch Plains, it's all from that grant and from that contract. So, you know, just a point of how we're expanding and how Meg and the staff, two of which are here tonight, are just doing a wonderful job. Lastly, we've been very lucky as a library to have a really awesome Civil War series for the past few years. It gets better and better every year, and the, and the masses come every year. It's usually sold out. You kind of have to get, you know, advance notice. I don't, I don't even get a special in, being the president, I have to get in line as well. But Scotch Plains Public Library is one of 50 libraries in the whole United States to be awarded a grant from the prestigious Gilder Lerman Institute of American History. This is the third time in the past four years that we've been given the honor of having the series at our library. The friends of the Scotch Plains Public Library are a huge asset in this regard. They really go to town for us and go to bat for us and get the ball rolling. We have seven scheduled events this, to accompany this exhibit, including a May 8th lecture and book signing by a naval historian by the name of Craig Simmons. On Mother's Day weekend, we have a family genealogy afternoon titled, "Tracing Your Civil War Ancestors, White and Black." It's on Saturday, May 10th. There's a reception and a first look at the exhibit, exhibition on Wednesday, April 30th. That runs April 28th through May 17th. So, I would encourage the public, if anyone's still watching, to come out. I would encourage members of the council to come and get a real feel for what the, what the great things that the, that the library does for the town. I know, as mentioned earlier, I missed the public comment because we were, we had our meeting this, earlier this evening. That's my piece. It's good to see everybody.
Mr. Noonan, great to see you. Great serving with you. I mean, what you do over there with that Civil War, you know, retrospective is spectacular. I've attended several of them. It really is standing room only, folks. So, as soon as you hear about it, you better get in line. And, and great, it's such a prestigious, you know, event to have in our town, and it's truly because of what the library director did, our colleagues, and yourself for making that such a great resource for us.
Thank you.
I happen to be a Civil War buff, so I love it. That said...
Wait, can I just, Jeff, that's why I assumed that at the last meeting, it wasn't publicized, it wasn't a televised meeting, but one of the residents, Adrian Robatello, and I know I'm mispronouncing her last name, I always add a syllable there, spoke very favorably of the work that the library has done in the field of autism. So, I just wanted to relay that in case that didn't get to you. And just also suggest that if there's a situation where you're exceeding space as far as, could, could the manager possibly assist with helping to find a different venue if it's a lecture?
Well, it's a, I would think with the Civil War stuff, it's tough because a lot of it is on loan from different libraries and collectors, you know, collectors and things.
I just wanted to know if anything's captured with that.
I guess Jerry and I can talk, I mean, other reasons, right, of course.
Listen, you guys try to work that out. I'm going to jump in here. I don't mean to be rude, but today happens to be my 63rd birthday.
You told me not to say it.
And, and I told them not to say it, but now I'm starting to get hungry for a piece of my birthday.
Trust me, I didn't, I didn't want to prolong things.
Ms. Noonan, I mean...
Tomorrow's my birthday.
Is it really?
35.
Oh, 35, okay, you stinker. All right, I'll buy it.
It's good to see you guys.
Well, that said, that said, I, I was remiss in something, I know there's some folks who insisted that I do this in the past. This is a public meeting. We do provide access, you know, to this council by dialing this number. We'll wait just a couple of minutes before we go into the execution session. That number again, 908-322-2076. Wow. See that? Lucky we did that, huh? Ms. LaSina? Did we lose you? Let's try again, folks. I think whoever was calling, we just, good night, Jeff, good night, ladies.
Good night.
Oh, maybe we pulled the plug out, huh? I didn't pull the plug out, guys. Number again, New Jer, let's make sure this is working. You know what? It's not working. I bet we don't have any technical people here to make this work, right? Folks, that number again, New Jersey, 908. There you go. Boy, oh, boy. Good evening, council chambers.
Good evening, Mac Glover.
Good evening.
Range, Evergreen Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to know why we don't have the council televised twice a month, like we used to do.
Actually, we never did televise our conference meetings.
Yes, oh...
No, 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 I, I know I'm correct on this. We used to have two public meetings a month, and yes, both of those were televised. We used to have two conference meetings, and they were not televised.
Oh, bye.
So, under adminis, under prior administration, there was consensus, I think the manager at the time was Mr. Marion, and the consensus of the council, which is pretty consistent with a lot of other municipalities, went to two meetings a month. I'm saying we can't televise the conference meeting, I'll defer to, you know, Mr. Jones, you know, for figuring out how to fund that.
If that's something you want to do, it has to be done the next contract. This contract that was written predates me, and it only had for one, one meeting a month.
When does the contract expire?
Uh, it started in the summer, so I mean, the end of the summer.
Because I can tell you that Mr. Jellinella asks the same question all the time.
Okay, well, we're clearly going to address that, and that, that'll happen certainly sooner or later.
Okay, now, now, besides the one live council meeting that the TV company does, what else do they do live for the town? Did they do the children's egg hunt?
They don't do anything else live. Everything they do, they record and tape. So, no, I, I would be happy to provide you a copy of the contract as it's public information, and you'll be able to see everything that they do.
Yeah, they, they are contracted to do the public meetings, we just lost the air in the building, okay?
How about...
No, 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 let me, and then, and then they, I think there's around several special events, all of the concert series, they are to do the Memorial Day Parade, they're there for Veterans, for Columbus Day, I believe Veterans Day, they record those sessions as well. So, it's not as if they weren't...
What do they do in between those times?
What do they do in between those times? We...
They manage the station, they upgrade, they put the announcements on, and make sure the program is listed, it's televised.
They do nothing for the town, they don't do any township?
Everything I just said was for the township government.
And what we are doing, just so you know, Mr. Jones and I have had this discussion, we are providing additional funding for new equipment this year, which I think will facilitate a lot more capability in terms of upgrading our TV 34, Mr. Jones, the actual broadcast. The bulletin board will get upgraded. Monies have been identified for that already. It's not part of our capital budget, but we had it in a previous ordinance from a year and a half ago. So we certainly will have the funding to do that, and Mr. Jones has shared with me that he's already in discussions with this company, who is very capable of addressing their equipment needs and their enhanced broadcasting capabilities, which they're certainly capable of doing, but they've got to be paid to do it.
Okay, one more, well, two more questions, actually. One question is, the DPW manager that was hired by Mr. Jones, did he work for the Tilkon Company before he came to Scotch Plains?
The resume is public information. I'd be happy to provide it to you.
Of course not.
I said that resume is public information. I would be happy to provide it to you.
Did you hear his response, ma'am?
Yes, I did. And I'd like to congratulate Mayor Glover on...
Reaching 63.
...being voted with three other mayors. That was wonderful. Was it the most popular or the, by the Chamber of Commerce?
Actually, it was, you know, it was kind of amusing because what they said was someone who, and I'm just quoting verbatim what I heard, as close as I get, "Someone for their passionate commitment to the township of Scotch Plains..."
Absolutely.
"...in the face of strong headwinds." I'm not saying that, that's what was said at the podium. I can't make it up, folks. Go to the videotape, you'll hear it.
You deserve it.
Well, it was very flattering, let me tell you, I don't want to belabor it, I want to get home for my birthday, but I was absolutely flattered that I made the final four. Maybe a worse basketball player on God's earth, but I did make the final four in that greater Chamber of Commerce.
And I certainly hope, Mayor Glover, going forward, that you will have some nice, reasonable people that are not contentious and arguable, arguing-intensive hardheads working with you in the future.
Well, thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Elsie.
And Elsie, thank you, Elsie. I was astonished for your comments, and we look forward to seeing you at a future council meeting.
Probably not.
Well, I put the invitation out there.
I know you did.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Thank you very much for the call. Can't make that stuff up, folks. Hearing no one. I'm looking at Ms. Delara over there. Ms. LaCena.
Whereas Article 6 of the Open Public Meetings Act provides that a public body may hold a closed session, and whereas the Township Council will during this meeting enter into a discussion on the following matters, litigation A, pending litigation status report, Jorgensen versus Heather Glenn at Scotch Plains Neighborhood Association, and Township of Scotch Plains, B, pending litigation status report, Heather Glenn at Scotch Plains Neighborhood Association versus PRC Group et al., C, contract negotiations, SPPWRA update, whereas the matters to be discussed in closed session are to remain in the strictest of confidence by all Township Council members in furtherance of their fiduciary duties to the Township of Scotch Plains. Now therefore be resolved, matters discussed at this meeting will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing and acting upon them in closed session no longer exist.
Do I have a motion to retire into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor? I. We're going to let the cameraman just pull out, you know, to take us offline and...